City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We're in the community wing of City Hall. If you could, please stand with me for... Don't stand yet. Hold on. Hold on just a second. I gotta caveat that. We're gonna do the pledge and then we're gonna do a moment of silence. Please keep Ray Stevens in your prayers. Him and his wife, Kim. I just spoke to her probably about an hour ago. And she said that he is out of ICU. So he is one step up from ICU. And we're praying that all the best for him and his family. So with that being said, if you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Ms. Cook, if you could call to roll, please.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll begin tonight with item E, public participation. If the item is on the agenda, please reserve your comments for when the item is presented for discussion and vote. And they do have the updated agenda with the discussion of seat three, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So if there's anything that's on the agenda, please refrain until we get to the agenda item. First speaker, yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Chantal Pruniger. And I'd like to have some help. How do I do to get that not on my driveway anymore?
We'll discuss that. We'll try to answer your question, ma'am.
Okay. This is the Flagler Penny Saver. It lands sometimes on the driveway, most of the time in the swells or in the culvert, or the rain makes it mushy. And I can't stop it. So if somebody can help me stop it, I really would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cook, the timer, please. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Eric Morissette. I work with Coulter Land. We have two projects in Palm Coast coming out of the ground right now. Saw a lot of new faces up here tonight. And it's been a long history. So I just wanted to kind of come and speak to you a little bit about it. First of all, Citation Boulevard, if you've had a chance to drive it, it's open and almost finished now. We're finishing up the landscaping and we're very excited about where that's coming. So we welcome you to come take a drive of it and see how nice that turned out. A little history lesson, when we first came to Palm Coast, the zoning out there was 50-foot lots. And we were... We could go in there and just do 50-foot lots. And staff in the city came to the developer, Coulter, and said, "Hey, let's tell you about the history of the fires in the city and the response times that we need to shorten with a road connection that never got built by ITT." So we all went to a drawing board together and learned how to cluster the project and get the road built. And it was a great collaboration between partnerships. And we've always viewed this as a partnership with the city. It hasn't just been a one-way street at all. In fact, the city has come to us during this process and said, "Hey, if you got an opportunity, code doesn't require, but could you increase your flood storage capacity for us?" So we looked at opportunities in the project to create additional flood capacity, storage in the project. As we came up for final approvals in the commission, the commission said, "Hey, why don't you look at trying to put a commission... connection from the project into the amenity site?" We went back to a drawing board and we got it worked out. And it's a much better plan. So the whole time, it's just been a back and forth. And it's just been a great experience. So staff has always been available to answer questions, work through the code. And every time we hit a problem, either with building the road, with landscaping, with utilities, it's always been just, "Let's solve it together." And it's just been a really, really... Something I don't get to see a lot. But in our business, you know, it's a commodity that, you know, you're delivering the American dream, but it's a resource that you run out of, right? So it's always... You've got this perception that, oh, you're just gonna build your communities and leave. But we've always kind of taken the approach that we want to be here forever. We want to learn from it. We want to get better on the next one. So now we're doing Seminole Trace right down the street. It's under construction, which you may know it as Cascades. And we've elected to take that community and create a gated community. So we're gonna do some market separation. We've gone back to the drawing board and we're expanding the amenity program and doing pickleball and trails. And we're doing a lot more unique things there. Trying to do different things everywhere we go. But I invite you to come out and look at Seminole Palms when you get a chance. You'll see one of the unique things we do about the design is we took our 40-foot lots and our 50-foot lots and we made like a checkerboard pattern. So when you drive out there, the streetscape is very unique. So you don't end up with a whole row of 40-foot lots and then you got a parking problem because you got a driveway eaten up, most of that frontage. So I drove it the other day and it just creates a really different feel when you drive it. So welcome you to come out sometime, look at it. The amenity's gonna be breaking ground soon. And I think you're gonna be real happy with that as we go, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yep. Yes, ma'am. Pause for just a second, please. If you have your cell phone or tablet, please silence it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members and city staff.
State your name for the recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Marie Summers and I live at Nine Lakeside Place West here in lovely Palm Coast.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to pray for all of you tonight. Father God, in the name of Jesus, I ask a blessing and anointing upon our mayor, our city council members, and the Palm Coast city staff. I pray that they serve the residents of Palm Coast in a selfless manner, truly being public servants who put the people they are serving first. May they keep their hearts and minds according to the words of the Apostle Paul in Colossians 3:23. "And whatever you do, do it heartily as to the Lord and not to men, knowing that from the Lord you will receive the..." Excuse me. "The reward of the inheritance, for you serve the Lord Christ." Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public participation? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gibson.
Anna Gibson, P Section. First of all, thank you for considering me for the city manager position. I really appreciate at least voting on me. That meant quite a bit to me. The next thing I wanted to bring up is the comprehensive financial report that should be online. So the latest financial report that's online is 2022 to 2023. I'm not really sure why 2023 to 2024 isn't online yet. It's also not at the library. So I just would like us to look into that and maybe post it. The next thing I'd like to understand as we consider the upcoming agenda items is to have an understanding of the reserves. We always talk about the reserves, but no numbers are ever given for the reserves. From what I can tell from 2023, we might have substantial amount of money in those reserves. So I would just like you to keep that in mind as you're thinking through what's about to come. The next thing I wanted to talk about, I know it's of interest, is to make the pool more profitable and the golf course more profitable. I wanted to just throw out an idea at you, which is annual pass for the golf course, the pool, the tennis courts, and the pickleball courts. And I think you could use a case study of Disney, right? Disney just doesn't sell you one day at Disney, at one park. They sell you multiple parks or an annual pass or multiple days. So I think that might be something the city should look into to make those services more profitable. I certainly would probably buy an annual pass and enjoy going to all of those services. The last thing I wanted to echo, I know someone mentioned it in the past, but the ability to have handouts when we're in the audience. I understand this can be expensive if you're just printing countless handouts and you don't know how many people want to come. But if there's a way that, hey, I can reserve a seat, pick out an extra handout, because it is very difficult to sit here and then watch what's being presented. And sometimes that information, in my opinion, seems to be intentionally vague or small or difficult to read. And if we really want to be as knowledgeable and really participate in the audience and give you our opinion, then we need to see what you're presenting. So those are just a couple of thoughts that I had that I wanted to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jim Blecken. Live in C Section. Limited to three minutes, so I'm gonna hit some things real quick. Proclamation is it is flood awareness week, so I'd like to bring up the flooding that happened again. And trying to get away from $14.6 million of perpetual maintenance on the swells and see if we can't get a poly resin down at the bottom. That would be a permanent solution to eliminate $14.6 million per year being wasted. Also, I'd like to know if there's any progress on the report that was supposed to be drafted up in 2023 regarding the dredging of the canals. Next, I'd like to get about the building that's going on and the way that there's a proposal to increase everybody's utilities. Instead of having the developers pay for those improvements directly is very hard. They can do it versus getting a bond. That bond can then be set off to the actual 200 homes when they're purchased to have a mellow roof so that over the 30 years of the homeowner that takes occupancy, that bond is now met. The infrastructure's put in by the developer, passed on to the new owners, but not incorporated to everybody in the city. I don't think it's quite right that the developers get in their subdivided land and they don't have to pay for their own infrastructure. That shouldn't be for the whole city to bear that burden. So there is a way to fund it for builder. I'm a builder. Retired now. But I know how it works and it can be done. And it should not be passed on to the city. Next one is the speed bumps that have been put on. I know it's temporary. There are people that'll go up, stop, and really cause congestion because they're going so slow over them. They're at a stop before they continue. There will be a problem. I live down Simron. That is a one-way in, one-way out only. We don't have another option to go on a different road to bypass that. Stop sign, if you want to control speed, put one stop sign in, but not four speed bumps that turn into stop signs. It's really, really hard and it's causing more backup and congestion, especially when you have the buses. The school buses come by and they stop every other street. So maybe we can look at those. I know it's temporary. Maybe we can get rid of them. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one... Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Steve. Come on up.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I know there's a lot of issues with the traffic calming, but I have to say that the one... The traffic calming that's happening over there on Florida Park Drive is really a tremendous help. It helps the residents be able to get in and out of their driveways without cars just zooming and zooming by. And it also helps with the children crossing the street to get to the bus stops. And so there's a lot of good to it. So I still want to praise the fact that the city did look into doing the speed study. They needed the data. So they got the data and they came up with a plan. And I just want to praise y'all for the plan that you did come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Cliff Brown. I'm at 140 Eric Drive, Palm Coast.
Yes, sir.
I want to bring up the fact that there was a piece in the paper about the painting of the houses, the colors. I don't think that's very, very good. I know we're not a gated community, but I don't think that we should be having... Changing the policy about the painting of houses, orange and green and purple. It looks like Disneyland here now. And I've been here since 2004. And then we had a beautiful community here. All of a sudden, things are just going wild. And people are mentioning about the painting again. I know that somebody in the board sits there is a painter. And I don't think that should be done. I think we should stick to our policies, what we had. And the other thing is, I believe that we gotta stay the way we are. Stay the course. The place is getting out of hand with all these buildings. It's just outrageous now. The traffic is unbelievable. It's really, really getting out of hand. So I just want to keep you guys abreast of what's going on if you don't know what's going on now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. Sir, I'm the painter on the city council. But if you're saying the colors have been like that, we have not changed any ordinance in this city. So if those colors are in violation of the current city ordinance, that's something else. But I have zero to gain by anybody being allowed to paint their house a different color. City manage... I'm sorry, council first. Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I was just gonna... I'm assuming she's gonna tackle something for Anna in terms of those financials. So I'm just kind of going through the list. Thanks for the information. I didn't get your last name. I think it was Jim about the traffic calming as well as the poly resin. I don't... I'm not knowledgeable on that technology. So I'd love to hear more and try to understand what that looks like.
If he could follow up with Carl, that would be great.
Yeah.
Is he still in the audience?
If we can get some information on that.
Please follow up with Carl.
And then I just wanted to say, I think it was Mr. Morissette, we appreciate the partnership for Citation. That's gonna mean a lot for the Southwest residents in terms of fire response times and things like that. So it's a big help to our city. So thanks for that partnership. And then I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. The only thing I would like is, I know we just recently received an update on the canal dredging. City manager, if you wouldn't mind at the end of council comments, giving us an update on that.
Sure.
Councilman Gambaro has nothing. City manager, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just to respond to some of the public comment, for the resident concerned about the Penny Saver, you do have to contact them to stop service at your driveway. Thank you, Mr. Morissette, for coming and speaking about the collaboration of our project and looking forward into the future on those developments. Ms. Gibson, the annual comprehensive financial report is on the council agenda for 3/18 and has to be adopted by council before it's publicly noticed on the website. So that'll be at their next business meeting. Reserves are also in that information as well and is presented through the budget process. The pool and golf course and annual pass holders. The Southern Recreation Center does offer you admission into the pool as well. So if you have an annual pass holdership with the SRC, then you can use the pool as well. There is also a QR code located near the agendas that has the full packet of information for what's being presented tonight. So you can scan that QR code and follow along with us on those presentations. And it's located at the staff table near the door. We will look into the swell design with the poly resin. And as far as the saltwater canals, I met with our stormwater engineer, Mr. Carmelo Morales, this afternoon. We received great feedback from the regulatory agencies, the Army Corps, and St. John's River Water Management District and FDEP. So we're moving forward in that and a presentation will be scheduled to city council in May. And that will really give them some updates on the scenarios of what is that dredging maintenance plan? And then what do we do for homeowners? What is our city plan? And then kind of discuss some necessary funding because right now that project is unfunded. Private communities do have to have their own bond to support their own infrastructure. So they put in their own stormwater system. Where it changes is whenever the city provides utilities as per our master water and wastewater service agreement. Thank you, Mr. Carr, for your comments about the traffic calming. And a survey is on our website for anybody interested in giving feedback on those traffic calming devices. There's many throughout the city that are very different. There's some chicanes. There's some speed humps. And then there's some lane narrowing. And all of that is on our website at the very bottom for you to take those surveys and get the feedback back to city council that will be presented. And the house color item will be on city council's agenda in April. And I think that concludes public comment, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. We will go on to item F, the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th business meeting? I'll make that motion. Second. And... All in favor? All right. All right. The minutes are done. Okay. Item G, discussion. Item six, discussion, city council seat three. The city manager is gonna talk us through the steps for this. I just want everyone to understand that Mr. Stevens... Mr. Stevens is a very good man. And he worked very, very hard to get that seat. It's just his body's failing him. And he came to the realization that it's not something he's gonna be able to do, even if he recovers. And, you know, Kim has been forthcoming with me throughout everything that's been going on. I try to call her every other day to check on him. And we are fortunate that he is out of ICU. But he is not able to maintain the seat. And he did the honorable thing by resigning. And we will have to appoint another council member to serve out his term until the 2026 election. And the person that runs will be running for the second two years. So city manager with that, if you could, please.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. So I looked back on our process for when we... When city council appointed for the seat four vacancy and mirrored a schedule that was very similar to that. So my suggestion to you would be... That mirrors that process would be an application period of about 15 days would launch today and go until March 19th. Then you would conduct interviews during a special workshop. My proposal to you is April 1st, before your evening business meeting. That being because the week of March 24th... The 25th, actually, we are gone to Tallahassee advocating for your legislative priorities. So we would push back a week to April 1st at 3:00 PM. Then the previous process had a public workshop where the item was on for discussion. Unfortunately, last go around, we had to cancel that workshop due to illnesses of board members. And so it would be my suggestion to have that on... Still have that as a workshop item on April 8th, which is scheduled for an evening meeting at 6:00 PM. And then you would have your public hearing business meeting on April 15th at 9:00 AM, where you would select a candidate through that process. That being that any resident that was interested and wanted to give public comment would have the opportunity, both at an evening meeting and the next meeting at a daytime meeting. So we are ready to go pending your approval to launch the application and have all of that ready and the website upon your approval.
Okay. Thank you. I think the precedence... We have precedence here. We just went through it. So I have no problem with the current format. I would encourage the council, if we could. I think it turned into a horror show, this last one. And I would like to suggest, I'm not sure if the council is familiar with the STAR interview technique. Do you guys, are you familiar with that interview technique? Me and the city manager discussed it. The STAR technique is you give a person... You ask... When you ask a question, you ask for a situation, the tasks they were given, the actions taken, the actions they were taking, and the results. It makes it... It's a really effective interview technique. And I think we should try to adopt that. But I really don't want to let it get out of control like it did the last time because I was in the chamber for the actual interviews. And when the first interview started, I had to get up and leave because I couldn't be part of something like that. But I don't think this council is gonna conduct themselves in that manner. Does anyone have any comments to add to this? Councilman Miller?
Is there any direction that we need to provide any... You know, aside from adopting the timeline?
I'm sorry. Another part of the precedence is that, as far as I know, the charter does not specify that the person has to be from that district. But the precedent was set during the last one that you guys selected someone from the district that was being vacated.
So Mayor, I did confirm with legal the charter requirements. And there is a qualifying requirement that you have to live in the district. I don't know, Jeremiah, if you had anything more on that?
That's great.
So we're good? So we should be selecting someone from District Three? Okay. That's...
And Mayor, that's indicated on the form. We say that it's a requirement that they live in that district.
Okay. So anyone in District Three that is willing to take on city council seat and possibly be elected to fulfill the whole term of Ray, please feel free to apply. And we can publish a map or check your district. Just check your district. There's district maps out there. So go ahead. Councilman Miller, anything else?
No, I think that... I think there was questions regarding that, so I think that covers that.
Okay. I think the prior one, they didn't... He wasn't a member... He wasn't a resident of that district, the prior one. I can't remember. I don't... I can't remember, so.
I think there were applicants.
Okay.
But they didn't get selected, so.
Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor, did you have something? Anything from you, Councilman Gambaro?
Yeah, so just being the guy that just went through this appointment process, you know, as an applicant, I thought it was fair and equitable. And, you know, I support the timeline and that the candidate, you know, reside within the district in accordance with the charter.
Okay. So by the 15th, we'll be making our selection.
Yes.
15th of April?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you have the application ready to push the button to make it active today?
Yes. The application and the website.
Okay.
Just one more question, sorry. Excuse me. In what way are we advertising this to make sure people are aware of what's going on?
I will send you... We'll update the communications plan that we did for the seat four vacancy and send it to city council. But we did have an outline that was forwarded to previous city council. So we'll update that and mirror the same process. Thank you.
Okay. So be looking forward and go to the city website. If you're from District Three, feel free to apply for the position. Okay. Do I need to open this up for public comments? Public comments? Anyone wishing to discuss the appointment of seat three, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Lisa from Palm Coast. Isn't Ray Stevens' seat is not up until 28?
Yes, ma'am. He will be... Whoever holds the seat will be there until the next regularly scheduled election for the city. Then they'll be eligible to be voted in to serve out the remaining two terms to maintain the staggered nature of the city council.
You mean two years only?
Two years. Two years. I'm sorry. Two years. So technically, the person will be eligible for two full terms plus two years if they occupy this seat and can win reelection.
Well, I know you guys don't know who's going to apply. But on behalf of... But on behalf of, I would hope most of the residents agree with me, we need a successful businessman on the council who knows how to raise money for the city instead of digging in our pockets all the time. You know, really, you guys, we need to have business here in this city. Big business, not a little store or a major store that's just going to pay retail salaries. We need major business, a manufacturer, something. They're bringing manufacturing back to America. Let's get started on, you guys have some economy lady. If you guys aren't going to bring business here, then we can save money by getting rid of her. But seriously, we need a businessman on city council to help you guys. We have, the rest of you, I think, you know, military background, we have legal background. The military should be good at running everything, but we need a businessman to bring in business and knows how to attract it instead of digging in our pockets. Because I'm getting kind of fed up with that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marie Summers, Nine Lakeside Place, West Palm Coast. I'd like to endorse Andrew Werner for the District Three seat vacancy, should he apply. He is a man for the people who thinks outside of the box and is a true conservative. If he decides against applying for the vacancy, then I implore you to hire a person with conservative values who will represent his or her district and the people of Palm Coast with this thought in mind. Is this action in the best interest of Palm Coast residents and the best use of their hard-earned tax money? After all, isn't that why we elect all of you to serve we, the people? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else to discuss this matter? Yes, sir.
James, just a reminder, the last time we went through this, not just someone from District Three, but someone who had not just recently moved into the district. I think there was an issue with that. So I don't know if you want to put limitations or a minimum on that when you reconsider your candidates, because that was an issue, you know, it was a big blow up about, you know, so and so just moved in, or is renting a house just to get, just to get into the seat. So why don't we keep that in mind when you're checking out your candidates?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Anna Gibson, P section. I actually heard a quote over the weekend that I think I will share with you because it seems very pertinent. Says, "Democracy does not select for competence, it selects for communicated vision and values." I just wanted to share that with you. And I also wanted to ask you why this isn't a special election. If it's going to, if it's a four-year term, why don't we just elect it? Why are we hiring for it? So if you could comment on that, that'd be great.
It's following the charter, ma'am. Any more public comments?
My name is Mike Broth. I'm from Palm Coast. I don't know, I wanted to say something before, but you didn't give me the time. Kind of like going on what he said about getting somebody in there in business. I don't understand how we can be using $6 in water and paint over 150. And now you just want to raise it where it's going to be $2,000 a month. When people like us who are on, who are on a fixed income with disability, we can't afford that. So what, are we not going to be able to use water and then we're going to, are we going to lose our homes or what? You know, I don't, I don't think it's very fair how that system runs. And I think y'all need to take a look at that. I would certainly appreciate it because, you know, it's hard enough for us so as it is. So if you could certainly take a look at that, we'd certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else concerning the District Four seat? Sir, you come up to the podium if you have something to say.
I'm in kind of an agreement, not kind of, I am in agreement of why are we keep raising stuff? Just because you can or what?
We're just discussing the District Four seat. We'll, we'll talk, that'll be later on the agenda when we talk about the water rates.
Okay, well, I had a chance to come today. I've never been to one of these things. Forgive me if I'm out of line, but I'd like to keep that in thought. We do need a businessman, a business person. Excuse me, ladies, I'm not used to this kind of thing. And I just want to understand why it seems like, and especially at this time, because we have a new president now who seems to be getting things in better order. And perhaps we'll have some breaks. And the minute we get a break and a little extra money, whether it be $2, it doesn't matter, somebody in office somewhere, somewhere seems to say, ooh, there's some money, grab it. Instead of looking at the whole picture and figuring out how we can at least stay where we're at, it's just not a matter of keep raising it, raising it, raising it. This area is full of older people. We can't afford raising it, raising it, raising it. Because the man's right, we'll lose our homes over this. This is not right. Stop with taking our money. And I think a businessman or woman would know how to do that better than just somebody elected somewhere from somewhere. And I hope I wasn't too off balance here, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to discuss the appointment of the District Three seat? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring you back to the dais. Any discussion, I, I don't, I don't think we really need a, a limit of time of someone living in a district. I don't, I don't think we, we'll be able to smell that out pretty quick, right?
Well, I think the, the, the charter kind of defines that it's at qualifying time. So, you know, for us to try to restrict further than that, I think would be kind of out of bounds.
We'll follow the charter.
And I don't know the specifics exactly how it is, but I know there's an explanation for why an appointment versus, and I was wondering if you could?
Sure, so the city council in the city of Palm Coast is governed by a city charter that was elected by the residents of Palm Coast whenever the city was incorporated. And there's been occasional charter review committees that look at the charter and figure out what needs to change. So the charter dictates how the process is followed. And when a council member has a vacancy or they leave their position, then it follows these steps. For all city council members, not the mayor, it's always an appointment until you get to the next election. For the mayor, it's a special election. And that's what's, it's what's dictated in our city charter of the process that we have to follow.
Thank you, city manager. Anything else from the dais? Okay, with that being said, we'll move on to item H, ordinance of the first read, council? Counsel?
Mr. Blocker, the mayor's asking you to read the ordinance into the record.
The ordinance, state the ordinance.
Oh, yes, sir. Is it ordinance number 2025 Utility Rate Amendment?
Yes, sir. City manager, introduce the speakers.
Yes, Mayor, city council, thank you. Director of Stormwater Engineering, Mr. Carl Cody, and our rate consultant, Mr. Murray Hamilton from Raftellus will be presenting. We did modify the presentation from your workshop on February, February the 11th. We streamlined some of the information and then really wanted to elaborate more on project specifics about what the rates will be paying for, what the impact fees will be paying for, and the benefits of each project. I know many of the residents want us to fix our existing infrastructure, and this is a plan that helps achieve that. Many, many, many of the projects indicated by Mr. Cody tonight will help revitalize that existing infrastructure that was put in back in the ITT days. So Mr. Cody is going to move forward with his presentation.
All right, good evening, Carl.
Yes, good evening, mayor, council and citizens. So I'm going to begin here by starting off with a, a slide of some dollars. And so this slide shows the five-year capital funding for the utility, and it's sorted by project type and the funding source. So it includes the current fiscal year '25 approved budget as well as the proposed 26 through 29 proposed budget projects. These were all included as part of the gap analysis study that Raftellus performed. Water capacity makes up 19% of the total budget. Waste water capacity makes up 44% and repair and replacement makes up 37% of the total. So these projects are to be funded by rates, impact fees, grants, loans and bonds as shown in the graph. So I kind of color coded them by, by the funding source type. So rates are in blue, the impact fees are in red, grants are green. SRF loan, that's for our existing SRF loan for waste water, two expansions in purple. And then we have two bonds, the, the light blue one and then the orange one in 28.
Mr. Cody, could you just share with everybody what an SRF loan is?
So an SRF loan is a state revolving fund loan. We, we get it through the state. Typically, those rates are very, very good. I believe this one is a 0% rate, but there are some admin fees tied to it. And you don't start paying it back until the project's completed. So we, they do have limitations on how much you can borrow per year and it has to meet certain requirements. But we did obtain an SRF loan for the wastewater treatment plant expansion that is just nearing completion, ready to come online here more than likely next month. Thank you.
Mr. Cody, I have a question as well. So the numbers that you have listed at the top, the revenues for the rates, is that, is that including the proposed miscellaneous fees that we are looking at also enacting in this ordinance?
No, because miscellaneous fees are usually to cover our costs. So like the, the cost to purchase a water meter is not in these dollars expenses or revenue or staff time and, and equipment or, you know, the admin time. So those are separate fees. Those are really to cover cities' costs. So they're break, they're typically made to be a break even. There are some where there are fines if you're in violation or things like that, but typically they're a break even and those aren't capital, so that we do not show those here.
Okay, and the impact fees, are those at the rates that we increased them to last year?
Correct. These are the projections based on the, the phased-in increase.
And the rates that you have listed, is that based on us adopting the rate, the increase rate that you all have proposed or that you are proposing tonight?
It is, and it, it's at the 15% R and R transfer to, to fund the, the R and R fund. And that, those rates are only for R and R projects.
Right, so if we did not adopt the proposed rate, what would that figure be? 75 million would be down to what?
It depends what the rates would be because we have to operate the system and treat the water. So if there's any money, it could be $0 if there's no money left to transfer. We have to do a minimum of 5%, I think, per our bond. So it would have to be at least 5%, but more than that would be depending on if there's any money left.
Okay, thank you.
So some of our primary utility infrastructure is shown on this slide. It consists of 67 production wells, six water ground storage tanks, over 830 miles of water main, 700 miles of sewer main, 75 miles of reclaimed main piping. There's over 60,000 meters, 177 lift and pump station, almost 17 and a half thousand pep tanks, over 4,000 fire hydrants and reclaimed storage and pump station at Cigar Lake. So really what I was trying to show with this slide is the utility infrastructure is extensive, that requires ongoing maintenance, repair and replacement in order to provide safe, reliable and quality water and treatment of wastewater. So this slide here is, is to discuss capacity. You know, people talk about capacity and, and what that is and just trying to help people have a better understanding of when we say capacity, what does that mean? So, so we'll, we'll start off by what is capacity? It's the maximum permitted amount of water and wastewater a municipal system can treat, store and distribute efficiently. It includes both physical infrastructure limits, pipes, pumps, plants and storage, and operational limits, treatment processes, staffing and regulations. So why does capacity matter? Well, population growth, more demand on the systems, regulatory compliance, we have to must, we, we need to meet state and federal requirements, environmental protection for the health and safety of our residents and to protect water source from irreversibly damaging it from over pumping. So some factors that affect capacity are some infrastructure limitations. Systems must be designed to handle peak demand. So, you know, during a drought, when we're pumping water from the ground and, and people are irrigating their lawns and, you know, there's a peak demand there and we need to be able to, to withstand those, those peaks. So stormwater and infiltration, so heavy rainfall, leaks, water getting into the system, you know, they all overwhelm the wastewater system. And then regulatory permitting, you know, that's an ongoing, ever-changing requirement that needs, we need to be in compliance with. So planning for capacity needs, you know, they entail items like expanding treatment facilities, securing water source accessibility, investing in advanced technology, securing state and federal funding. And what are the impacts of not addressing capacity? Could be service disruptions, overloaded systems can lead to boil water notices, sewer backups and water restrictions, higher costs to, to accommodate or deal with emergency repairs, chemicals, labor, regulatory fines and increased financial burdens. And then economic and environmental consequences, insufficient capacity can harm, you know, the ecosystem. And then Palm Coast's approach, you know, planning for capacity has always been proactively accessing capacity to support growth while maintaining water quality and then always seeking funding for expansion projects through grants and other low-cost loans. So the city operates two?
Mr. Cody, just one second. Can you go back two slides real quick?
Sure.
So just, just for, for the audience, the pep tank, yeah, I've been spending time out at the wastewater treatment plant, but the, the pep tank is our major point of water intrusion. So when we have a, a heavy weather event, it drops a ton of rain on us. That, that's one of the major points of intrusion where it's overloading our, our wastewater system and why it's, it's an integral part of, of some of the things that we're considering for, for repairing down the road, continue to do that so that we maximize wastewater throughput and processing versus, versus the stormwater that gets in, into the system from there. Thank you.
Right. And from the previous presentation, we discussed the pep tanks. And Palm Coast has the second largest amount of pep tanks for a community in Florida. So, you know, that, that's something to make note of, what makes our system unique, but it also, you know, has a lot of maintenance and dollars tied to the maintenance and repair of our infrastructure. So discussing our wastewater treatment facilities, you know, the city operates two wastewater treatment facilities. There's Plant One, which is at 26 Utility Drive off Old Kings Road, just south of Palm Coast Parkway. It uses an activated sludge treatment process and it's currently rated at 6.83 million gallons per day. Then we have wastewater Plant Two, which is on PV Grade, which is off of US One towards the northwest part of the city. It's currently rated at 2 million gallons per day and it'll soon be 4 million gallons per day here in the next month or two. Plant One was originally constructed about 50 years ago and has gone through two significant modifications in 1994 and 2006. It handles most of the customers between US One and the eastern limits, which is approximately 80% of the city sewer demands. Plant Two handles primarily developments along and near US One corridor. Two was activated in 2018 at 2 MGD and is currently being expanded to 4 MGD. And they expect to be activated in the spring here of '25. And it will handle 40% of the city's sewer treatment needs moving forward. So a graph here has been prepared to kind of discuss the capacity and what our needs are and future needs will be. So as a utility system, we have to do a capacity analysis report, you know, at a minimum every other year. And we took information from that and added some additional lines to help some perspective as to what, what our needs are. So this graph goes back to 2010 and it shows the projected treatment needs up to 2050. So residential dwellings account for a majority of the wastewater needs with a balance coming from non-residential uses such as commercial, office and industrial. The utility five and 10-year plans are updated annually to assess current plant usage as well as the future projected needs. Now, this graph shows, you know, that just the developed platted lots by ITT for just the residential homes account for roughly 7 million gallons per day with another 2 million gallons per day to account for the current vacant ITT platted lots. So the angled line shows the annual average, which increases due to development. However, there are some spikes which, which can be attributed to infiltration of the stormwater groundwater system in years where we have above-average rainfall and large rain events. You'll note that there are three plant expansions shown. The first one was the construction of the new $2 million plant in 2018. And then with the current 2 million gallon expansion, which will be activated here in 2025, just to meet the required capacity of vacant ITT lots and current non-residential needs and expansion of wastewater Plant One is needed. So you can see we have the horizontal line in black, that's the approximate ITT build-out demand. And then the, the dashed red line is the ITT build-out and all the permitted developments that are out there and what that capacity would be if they constructed everything that they had, has, that has been approved. So this graph shows a separate capacity in past treatment million gallons per day and anticipated treatment needs for each of the wastewater treatment plant facilities. Expansion Two will be completed and we'll be able to ship a half a million gallons per day from Plant One to Plant Two. This does not alleviate the need for expanding Plant One, but does provide a very short period to complete the design and construction of the expansion before we reach capacity again. This does not alleviate the need for expanding Plant One, but does provide a very short period to complete the design and construction of the expansion before we reach capacity again. And our targeted completion of that expansion is late twenty twenty-eight. Based on our current projections, it is anticipated that future additional plant capacity planning efforts will begin around twenty thirty-five. However, this will be analyzed and updated annually based on growth. Now we'll discuss our water treatment facilities. So the city has three of those treatment facilities. Plant One was constructed in nineteen seventy-nine, and this is on Palm Coast Parkway, adjacent to the library, has a permitted capacity of six million gallons per day. Plant Two was constructed in nineteen ninety-two, and this is in our southern part of the city, off of Citation in between Seminole Woods and Bel Air, and has a capacity of three million gallons per day. Nope, I'm sorry, seven point five eight four million gallons per day. And then our Plant Three, which is adjacent to our wastewater plant in PV Grade off of US One, has a capacity of three million gallons per day. So when discussing treatment capacity, it is a two-pronged approach. The first prong is the St. John's River Wireman District that issues the city a consumptive use permit, a CUP, that establishes how much water we can pull out of the ground from various sources. And the second prong is the treatment capacity of the facility regulated by FDEP. DEP not only looks at the average daily allotment, but the maximum combined daily flows, which are not to exceed seventy-five percent of the total permitted capacity. The city did exceed that limit last year. So the city currently has fifty-one active wells utilizing water from the confined superficial aquifer, CSA. The five-year CIP includes the addition of six additional CSA wells. There are also sixteen active wells utilizing water from the upper Floridian Aquifer, the UFA. In addition, the city has begun the process to add five wells utilizing the Brackish Upper Floridian Aquifer. And some items to make note of is the CSA wells lose roughly five percent plus or minus of production annually. Adding new wells is the only way to increase wellfield capacity. And rehabilitation and re-drilling of wells is necessary in order to maintain our current production. So there's lots of R and R and dollars spent to maintaining our current level of sourced water. So this graph shows the plant capacities at the bottom, as well as the total system capacity at the top. The water treatment capacity is similar to wastewater capacity needs, with a three million gallon per day increase in the five-year CIP and future increase projected around twenty thirty-five, dependent upon growth and demand. So this gets into talking about our sourced water. So this is very similar to the previous graph. It shows roughly the water source for each plant. We do have ability to transfer some of this raw water source between plants, but not all of it can be done that way. There's some limited flexibility. And then we show our demand at the top. We have the brown bar is our CUP permit and what our capacity is. So you can see we're pretty much at capacity now. We have additional capacity coming up, which is utilized in the Brackish water, but we have to go through a process of doing some monitoring wells for over a period of time and going through the process with the St. John's River Wireman District to bring on those wells. So it'll be a several-year-long process to bring on those wells. And that's very typical for our wells. We do a test well first to make sure the viability before we go ahead and drill the actual well to make sure it's going to have good production. So, now we're going to head into the actual five-year capital improvement plan. And this slide here is the summary of the wastewater capacity. So the columns in the shaded salmon color are the projected execution amounts that include, you know, the inflationary adjustments, you know, moving in the future. So there's also a total column for the five-year plan. And then the columns to the right are the various sources that will fund the program, broken down by impact fees, grants, SRF loan, fiscal year twenty-six bond and fiscal year twenty-eight bond. So the first category of projects is wastewater Plant One, which is the most of the cost over the five years to cover the cost of the expansion of the plant, which will be covered in more detail in an upcoming slide. The second category is wastewater Plant Two, which is primarily completing the construction of the current expansion project this fiscal year and future projects to add a two million per day reclaimed water storage tank, an aquifer recharge investigation and direct potable reuse project. Category three is Plant Three. This is a study that will be discussed in more detail in a coming slide. Then we get into the next category, which is force and gravity mains. Both Old Kings Road projects and the first phase A1A are under construction, another A1A project is under design. And both of the A1A force main projects are funded by the county. The fifth category are reclaimed mains, and these projects are apparent as we treat more wastewater, as we aim to provide service to development to utilize reuse, which also creates additional revenue and limits people from using potable water for irrigation. The sixth category is the PEP system that includes PEP tanks with new homes and improvements to address the build-out of ITT PEP tank lots. And then we have a category which is for adding grants to lift and pump stations, and this is connected to a grant. And then we have the last category, which is upgrading lift and pump stations to provide additional wastewater flow. So I have some upcoming slides that will go into more detail on some of these various projects. So the first one, probably the largest cost one in this whole presentation tonight, is the expansion of an additional four million gallons per day to our wastewater treatment Plant One. So the layout maximizes the use of the site. It utilizes the current recommended advanced wastewater treatment process that is currently being used for new and expanded treatment facilities. By expanding the plant will not require any additional cost to redirect flows. The expansion is anticipating and providing capacity to address all of the vacant ITT lots, as well as meeting the city's projected capacity needs until twenty thirty-five. The speed of the current approved developments and future development may impact this, and that's why we'll continue to do annual updates and projections over time. This project is a requirement of the FDPE consent decree, and it will be funded primarily with a bond to be issued in the fall of twenty twenty-five, at which time we'll begin construction. And I say that loosely because we're using a construction manager at risk project, and this is a very fast-track project. So our goal is to start beginning construction in bits and pieces, purchasing long lead-time equipment, looking at ways we can enhance the operations and flow there. So, we say construction in the fall, though you probably won't see a lot happening, but we're going to begin moving as quickly as possible to expedite the project.
Mr. Crote?
Yes.
Can you go back, please? So for the audience here and the residents that are listening, I want to thank you guys for putting the chart or the block on the right-hand side that shows, you know, which portion of our, which revenue stream, whether it's, you know, the bond or the CIAC fund, which is new impact fees that will go along with this. Or you'll see later in the slides a green portion, which also it's ARPA funding, so it's funding that we're getting through appropriations down to us. But wastewater treatment Plant One is the central reason why I went to DC and engaged with Senator Scott's team and why we pulled, we asked them to come visit. This is, you know, for us, you know, the central point of a lot of the discussion that we've had up here on the dais. And so appreciate the breakdown of what revenue stream is paying for what. Thank you.
I have a question as well. So Carl, and I know this is just slide one of multiple projects, but so I have a question in regards to this. Obviously, this is one of the larger portions of the overall budget for this, this kind of rehab of our systems. My question is, in this project, and then multiple slides that we'll see later, we'll see kind of a difference in the utility impact fees used. Specifically, this is an expansion-related project. So I'm wondering if the reason why more impact fees aren't used for this specific project, is that because we're exhausting all of them, all the projected impact fees? Or is there, there is a reason why certain ones are fully funded or almost fully funded by impact fees and not this one specifically? And I know, again, this is a big bulk of the work that has to be done right here. So understand that there are some limitations and that little piece of the pie looks smaller when the total budget is a hundred and, you know, seventy million dollars. So if you could-
That is true. Our best use of money and first use is impact fees, and we do use and exhaust those first. And then we use bonds to cover the shortfall, and that is the intent.
So the only reason that there's not more impact fees used for this project, Project Four, the wastewater treatment facility one, is because we've exhausted them in all the other projects that are included in this package?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Cody, I have a couple of questions. So in the packet that was printed, and maybe it was just updated, I have different data than what I'm looking at right now. Can you explain that for me, please?
Yeah, there were some adjustments made. This slide in particular talked about the conversion, and this is really a slide regarding the capacity. So I added a second slide just on the conversion, which will come later when we discuss R and R.
Okay, thank you, because I had made notes on this one and I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
I was trying to have things match up better. I apologize.
Okay, no, that's okay. I wanted to make sure we're on the same page. My question specifically about this new slide, or updated slide, is you have down at the bottom obtained bond expansion for October of two thousand and twenty-five. It's March.
Yes, we-
Says obtained bond expansion, October two thousand and twenty-five, right?
Yes. We have a timeline. Murray will speak to that in his presentation. He has been working with a financial consultant who laid out a timeline for the bond.
Right, my concern is that we're what, six months away from that? And we're here, you all are here before council asking for essentially a four hundred and fifteen million dollar CIP commitment that is going to be largely reliant on bonds, the first of two, which you'd like to get in October of two thousand and twenty-five. And I'll get into this a little bit later with regards to, I think, what has been a lack of very long-term planning that I've seen since two thousand and eighteen. My question, though, is more focused on, when the last rate study was done, did we not anticipate having to go past that five years? And if we did anticipate that, why weren't the rates adjusted accordingly? Why are we not maybe doing this in a ten-year CIP rather than just a five? I know that the rates per law can be updated a certain time, but these are thirty-year loans, right? Is this this bond? Is this a thirty-year bond?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's a thirty-year bond, we know that we're going to have to repay this over that amount of time. I'm concerned about the future. What happens when staff is before council and council is before the residents at the next rate study? We're asking to borrow a lot of money. When you all come for the next rate study, do you anticipate there being more CIP needs?
In terms of major capacity or bonds, with specific, there's always going to be CIP needs.
Right.
Especially in the utility system, yes.
I agree with you. My concern is that we're going to keep asking for a big chunk. Because we're only, what it appears to be, is that we're planning in these smaller subsets of time, even though we're committing ourselves to thirty-year notes. So I'm looking to try to prevent a larger problem in the future, because I do see that also on the charts, after we do these larger increases, if we adopt this, it goes back down to what I think we're considering, like the rate of inflation per utilities, which is like a four percent, right? But is that going to be sufficient to pay back all this money and then to cover future CIP needs?
I mean, the planning period is difficult. And typically, rate studies cover a five-year timeframe and they recommend revisiting every four to five years is the recommendation. Because going out ten years, you know, yeah, we have growth projections, you know, and you saw when we look back on, you know, back to twenty twenty, you know, two thousand and two, I think it was, the original comp plant, some years we were on target, some years we were below, some years we were above. So, and then, you know, just going back to twenty eighteen, you know, nobody saw the cost of construction increase that we saw. You know, and that's where we are, that's where, kind of put us where we are today, was the drastic increase in these construction costs, not just construction costs, but the operating cost of the utility.
I agree with you. We have to attribute some of the increases to that, and I don't want to completely stop you. So I'm not going to get into some of the issues between twenty eighteen that I see between then and now. I'll address that later. I'm asking from a planning perspective, when I see us going for a bond or obtaining a bond expansion six months from now in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine million dollars or something, what's the amount of the first bond?
About two eighty-six.
Thank you, two eighty-six. That's not a good planning time.
Now, if we go back, we can, let's go back and look at the capacity chart. So we can start here looking at the wastewater. So, waste, you know, by adding that four million capacity, and you know, that green one is our growth projection. You know, we say twenty thirty-five is our planning stage. Typically, you start planning at eighty percent capacity of your system. You know, it could be by plant, you know, it all depends, you know, if you, depends where your growth is. You could have an issue with a particular plant. But you can see, we should not need another plant capacity till well after twenty thirty-five, unless we have drastic, drastic growth that is much different than what we experienced. You know, so when you average out ten years or more, because that's why we went back to two thousand and ten. So we had some slow periods, we had some high periods for a few years. So you're looking at this projection over, you know, looking back over time and using that to move forward and using Bieber numbers. We've used a consultant to assist us with this planning with our utility engineer, and they generated this graph. So based on this, the next rate study, we're not going to be coming back saying we need another two hundred million bond to do a wastewater plant expansion in five years. That's not going to be where we're at. You know, our goal today is to address our wastewater and water capacity needs for ten, twenty years from now. Will we have to add wells and things like that? Yes, because our well capacity loses, you know, capacity over time in production. But as far as major plant capacity, you know, I have a ten-year plan. We will be presenting that to council. And in my six to ten years, I do show some bonds there, but they're very small. And that didn't account for coming back to update capacity impact fees. So the intent would be, as soon as we are allowed by statute to come back and raise those impact fees again, we will. And the goal would be that raising those impact fees will offset the need for future loans or bonds to do some of those smaller capacity projects by adding wells and things like that.
Did the two thousand, thank you for that. Did the two thousand and eighteen study anticipate this expansion need? If you're saying that we don't anticipate something of this magnitude until two thousand and thirty-five, did the previous study anticipate this for now?
Yeah, I was not involved in that study, but when I went through it, I did not see the wastewater plant expansion in there. I did see a water plant expansion with some wellfield, which was in twenty twenty-three, that was based on a loan that was not obtained. And I think that's when we started the rate study because costs had gone up, you know, it wasn't going to be sufficient. It was a new day. So the water plant was, the wastewater was not. I don't know why. I cannot speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a follow-on question to that. So my question would revolve around, obviously, it's not going to be a flat line, but what has been our past CIP spending to indicate for the future that if we're fixing the majority of our problems here, you know, can that indicate in the future what we would expect to, you know, have to spend? I know probably less, right, because we're fixing, hopefully, the majority of our problems. But have we been spending anywhere that would require bonding in the last ten, fifteen, twenty years?
Well, we took on SRF loan for wastewater Plant Two. That was like thirty-one and a half million dollars.
Right.
We have gotten other SRF loans in the past as well to cover a multitude of projects, but they've been fairly small.
At low rate, yeah.
Yeah, they've been fairly small in nature. So if you look at the five-year plan I have here, it's, you know, over six hundred million dollars. And, you know, we're talking, you know, four hundred and fifty million of that is bonds. So, you know, if we can move forward in the future relying only on impact fees and the rates for R and R, those, you know, it's going to be, you know, a lot less, you know, because you take out the bonds out of that. So you're talking, you know, two hundred million dollars over five years instead of six hundred million.
Okay, I was just trying to capture, you know, once we make these changes, I think to the point is that, you know, are we fixing everything as need be so that we see less maintenance and improvement costs in the future? So that we can feel good that if we're taking this on, we're kind of fixing this for a long term, right?
That's the correct terminology. We're fixing a lot of the, we got a lot of R and R work in here, pipelining. We're addressing our oldest water plant, our oldest wastewater plant. We're lining a lot of pipes and manholes to address our INI issues. We're also going to be looking to, looking at ways to seal up our pet tank system to reduce more R and I, because less INI means less treatment at the wastewater plant. So, yes, this is going to address our capacity and our existing infrastructure for a long period of time.
Thank you.
Carl, I've got, I've got a kind of a follow-on question to the discussion here. So let's say somehow we were able to secure federal funding. The same would apply. We would use less bonding and apply federal dollars to offset just as we would with impact fees.
Right, correct. The bonds would, will list a various amount of projects. So if we did get grants for a particular project, those dollars could shift to fund a different project. And then when we go to the second, you know, obtain the second bond, we have the ability to reassess, and we have to do a, you know, almost a more in-depth financial analysis when we go get a bond. And that will, you know, if the rates are better, construction costs come down, you know, we have ability to make changes at that time.
Okay, thank you.
So wastewater plant three is a project, part of the Old Kings Road South Utility Project. The city will be receiving property, currently has a packaged plant on it from Fugua, the county. This is a site for our future wastewater plant three. Our initial step is to perform a study to complete some pre-designed phase services such as survey work, analyzing system flows to determine the ability and amount of flows to be shifted to this new facility, as well as the effluent discharge options. You know, the study will assist in determining the size and capacity, and we have funds in the five-year plan, which will be funded by impact fees for this. So we have Old Kings Road Forest Main addition. It's a 24-inch forest main will manifold wastewater flows from three existing master pump stations and will improve the pumping transmission of those stations to better accommodate current and future wastewater demands, in particular within the ITT lots of the R and P section of Palm Coast. The project will also complete a gap section along Old Kings Road, which currently has undersized forest main capacity. It's project center construction already right now, and it's funded with ARPA funds and impact fee funds. So pretreatment effluent system, PEP. It's an integral part of our wastewater system infrastructure for Palm Coast. The majority of the proposed budget is to provide and install PEP systems associated with the remaining 4,000-plus ITT lots that require PEP tanks. The other costs are to address improvements to the PEP system, primarily with the installation of a parallel force main. As ITT PEP tank lots are developed, the original infrastructure could not be constructed to handle the build-out capacity as it would not function if it was built this way. So we need to go in and add additional mains as we near build out in those PEP areas. So this here has a bond, impact fees, it's utilized in both bonds and impact fees. And we are looking, you know, we have some areas in the south end of town, we're looking at doing some parallel mains. I think we've done three main projects recently in areas across the city. We're also looking at ways to improve our tank design to help reduce some of the INI. So we're working with the vendors and looking at alternatives to enhance that.
So Carl, to Councilman Gombaro's point earlier about PEP, so essentially during these storm events, when we have the INI coming through this PEP system, so these force mains will help get more of that out of the area in terms of the neighborhoods?
Correct, and even during non-rain events, because as we get more and more PEP tank locks on it, the main wasn't sized to handle that many PEP tanks, so it's going to, it will be.
Sizing it correctly to the residents in that area that it serves?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So pump station 24 is located at the end of Pritchard Drive in Whiteview. It's one of the critical pump stations in the city. It will receive more flow once the force main on Old Kings Road is complete, the project we just discussed. And it will, it's going to need upgrades such as pump control panels, upsizing some pumps, a new generator, either a bypass system and a flow meter. Again, this is going to benefit the people that live in the R and P section, which are PEP lots and gravity sewer lots. So we have PEP station 57-4, this is down in Seminole Woods, and it's going to take flows from Seminole Woods and the Grand Landings area. It also receives additional flows from some of the upcoming developments in that area along the corridor. And this station is going to be converted to a triplex pump station with three pumps to handle that additional flow. This is, again, funded with impact fees. And if I, I didn't talk about the funding for Old Kings Road Forest Main, I guess I did, it was ARPA money and impact fees, so. So now we get into water projects. Most of the projects listed will be covered on the upcoming slides. You know, one item to make note of is that water plant expansion can only occur if the well field and wells are expanded. They kind of work in tandem with one another. These expansion projects take time and can be done in phases. Therefore, we're able to shift and split the funding between the two bonds. So we're able to help reduce the amount of the initial bond and put some of the work into the second bond to complete the project. So wastewater treatment plant one, it was built in 1977. It has a current capacity of 6 million gallons per day. A sustainability study was completed in 2024 to assess the facility and its operations. The study concluded that the infrastructure is in good condition, but upon review of operations, it was determined that two pilot studies should be completed. The current treatment process includes six dual-medial rapid sand gravity filters to make proper water quality in the finished water. The second pilot study will be completed on the ceramic filters and to remove organics and iron from the groundwater. So these pilot studies are currently underway, and the pilot study is funded with impact fees. So the benefits here are to increase operational efficiency, improve water quality, and by making these improvements, we're also being able to have the plant capacity increased by an additional 1.8 million gallons per day. So the improvements would be funded in the future with the 26 bond.
Carl, going back to water plant one. I know we have a lot of questions about the people that are served by this plant specifically in terms of water quality, because it has kind of a different look and taste than some of the other water that we have within the city. So talking about the pilot studies, and this will improve that quality as well.
This will improve that.
The aesthetic quality of the water. The water is completely safe to drink, but in terms of aesthetic quality.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we will touch, we also have a little bit more on that covering in the R and R section as well. So next project, lime sledge thickener and 2 million gallons tank. So treatment plant two uses zero liquid discharge process with mechanicized lime sledge thickening basin. So this sledge thickening basin is critical to the proper operation of the plant. A second sledge thickening basin is needed to handle additional flows and allow the flexibility to perform maintenance on each basin without disrupting the plant operations. Additional potable water storage is also needed. With 2 million gallon storage tank being added with the lime sledge thickener, the benefits are to provide additional potable water storage to help address those peak times, as well as the flexibility to perform plant maintenance without disrupting the plant operations or production. And this project is currently under construction, and it's fully funded by impact fees. So water treatment facility three expansion. So this, the goal of this project is to provide additional water treatment and improve redundancy to minimize plant production disruption during standard maintenance and operations of the facility. The project will increase capacity from the existing 3 million gallons per day to 6 million gallons per day. The project includes an initial phase to provide one treatment train for an increase of 1.5 MGD and the installation of additional skid of low-pressure reverse osmosis membranes to help with that redundancy and minimize disruption to the operations. Second phase will construct improvements for an additional 1.5 million gallons in treatment. And in conjunction with this well field expansion, the freshwater and brackish wells provide source water for the, for this expansion project. And obviously, the benefits are to provide additional capacity and incorporate brackish waters, a raw water source, to minimize impact to the operations and production. So the well field expansion, SW 1R and SW 2R. So these are additional raw water to source for water treatment facility one. A previous project drilled the new wells. SW 1 is located on the site of the treatment plant, and SW 2 is located north of the plant on 13 Brewster Lane. The current construction is to equip the wells and connect them to the plant. In the case of the off-site well, a raw water main will need to be extended from the site to the plant to connect up the well. So the benefits are that this is going to increase raw water supply to the plant by roughly 230,000 gallons per day. Additional flow will provide potable water to meet domestic water demands approximately 900 homes. So this project's currently under construction, and it is funded with, completed by impact fees. So water treatment plant facility one needs new wells. The additional wells are being added to the current well rotation, increasing production, allowing extra time to rest existing wells and increase well recovery. Wells 147 and 148 are proposed as newly developed and constructed production raw water wells that supply treatment for plant one. Tows wells were constructed, determined these sites were viable. Now we've got, and they're CSA wells, and they are currently in the process of being constructed now. The wells are being drilled. One has been drilled, the one over at the end of Commerce in Pine Lakes. And then we have another one along Palm Coast Park by, near Goodwill, that was just beginning construction to drill the well. The next step would be to finish up the design and equip those wells and then extend some mains to get them connected to our supply lines. So well field expansion, SW 24 and 25. These were will, excuse me, these were wells that were drilled during the formation of Palm Coast by ITT, but they were never equipped or connected to the system. So one well is located off Ryan Drive near Ryapple, another one is located off Rimfire Drive west of Ray Drive. Both wells were recently reevaluated and determined to be in decent condition with high-yield capacities. That's recommended for equipping in connection to the existing well field. The additional wells provide needed increase in raw water supply, and, but there is a water main extension of 11,000 feet that will have to get constructed to connect it to our existing raw water main system. So the benefit is to add capacity of roughly 900,000 gallons per day, which should serve over 4,000 homes. So our brackish water, you know, part of the utilities' long-range water supplies to provide necessary, augment the source of the water instead of using strictly freshwater. So one of those potential sources could be the brackish of the Upper Floridian Aquifer located in the vicinity of water plant three. However, in order to get approved from the St. John's River Water Management District to utilize this potential source, the city must show that such proposed withdrawals will not have a negative impact on freshwater aquifers and/or surface waters and wetlands. Plant three was designed and built so that it could treat both fresh and brackish water. So our, you know, the benefit here is to add capacity by installing brackish wells in the existing well site. So we're currently underway doing, beginning to drill those monitoring wells, using impact fees. And then as we develop and connect those wells to our system, we're utilizing a 26 bond and a 28 bond. So Otis Stone Hunter wells are located within an area generally located west of US 1 around various areas off Otis Stone Hunter Road. This area was explored for potential raw water wells prior to the formation of the city of Palm Coast. There are potentially six well sites which are viable for development. The wells are Upper Floridian Aquifer, approximately 300 feet in depth, also known as lime wells, and will likely produce between 300 to 500 gallons of raw water each. The total average potable output from the well is approximately 2.4 GPM or about 3.5 million gallons per day. After being processed as potable water, this amount would be able to provide demands for roughly 13,000 homes. Each of the six sites has wells drilled with casings installed in the late 70s or early 80s, which will likely require casing refurbishment. Now the wells are equipped with submersible pumps or controls, and no raw water transmission mains exist. Approximately four miles of raw water transmission main would need to be constructed to connect to the existing system. Easements are also going to be required for the raw water mains in the, in the well field. So this is a planning project where we're looking at the viability of these wells, acquiring land rights, and looking into what it would take to get these online. So these wells would be future wells, that would be added in the future, but the, the, and it's a long process. We need to make sure that we have the ability to add these wells in the future, so that's what this current five-year plan does. So now we get into the R and R project.
Carl, Carl, can you go back?
Yes.
Sorry. So have we captured the, this, this area and this land in our comprehensive plan that we'll be discussing more on Friday?
That I could not address. I believe we just came to an agreement with the landowner to have two years of access to the plant to perform a study.
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Cody is correct that we have an agreement with the landowner to explore and test these wells in that area. And inside your comprehensive plan is the policy to formalize the water supply plan, and we are actively working on that as well.
Okay, is that located within the 20,000 that we will be discussing on Friday?
The water supply plan is more long-term.
I'm saying that the 20,000 acres that we'll be discussing on Friday.
No, we're not.
Out of that?
Correct.
Okay.
This is what's needed for just current Palm Coast.
Okay.
I believe this is between the tracks in US 1 currently.
Right.
Thank you. So wastewater R and R projects, I mean, actually, water R and R projects. So maintaining the existing infrastructure is critical and needs to be properly funded. Some of the major costs of the water system are the water plants and meters, and most critically, the existing wells. If you recall, wells lose production capacity annually and require re-drilling, rehab, or new wells to regain that lost capacity. One of the major projects that requires bonds is to fund, of funding is to address the oldest water treatment plant to improve operations and improve water quality. Now we, so wastewater projects, maintain the existing infrastructure is critical and needs to be properly funded. So this R and R project is, you know, a lot of the dollars are spent on wastewater plants, lifting pump stations, and PEP tanks. So one of the major projects that requires a bond in fiscal year '28 is to fund, is to address the oldest wastewater plant, plant one, and the aging infrastructure to convert the treatment process to AWT so it can be integrated with the new plant expansion project. So water treatment facility number one, R and R. So this is the water treatment plant built in '77. Sustainability study was completed. It indicated that the infrastructure was in good condition, but they did recommend several options to address the aging facility. One option is to maintain the current treatment process with some R and R, and the other option is the conversion of the treatment process with, which only requires minimal R and R. So we, we put in, the funding for both is about the same if you entail the R and R in rehabbing the treatment process. So the benefits are to rehab the treatment process and address aging infrastructure and improve operations and reduce operating costs, as well as enhance the water quality. So we have both bonds in here, and, and we have some R and R that was funded by race, which is primarily the sustainability study that was completed. So radio read metering transmitters. Currently, there's over 4,400 meters remaining to be converted to radio transmitters. Staff's currently maintaining transmitters that get broken or damaged, and they're replacing anywhere from 1,100 to 1,600 per year. So what are the benefits of having these radio read metering transmitters? So it provides real-time data collection, enables immediate meter reading via tower transmission, ensuring accuracy and efficiency. It enhances monitoring and alerts, so it allows proactive detection of potential issues before billing and improves service reliability. To shift to meter maintenance reduces the need for meter manual reads, focusing resources on system maintenance and optimization. Improves resident access. Residents with real-time data, empowering them to monitor usage and set leak alerts. Enhances customer support, equips the customer service reps with detailed usage insights, leading to better assistance and resolution. So meter replacement program. So the meter changeout program is designed to replace meters that are 15 years old, aligning with industry standards. As meters age, their accuracy declines, often leading to slower readings and potential revenue loss for utilities. The 2024 budget allocated resources to hire two additional staff members dedicated to this program. Currently, they're replacing about 400 meters per month. However, there are almost 10,000 outstanding meters that require immediate replacement with additional meters reaching replacement threshold, you know, as we continue moving forward.
So we have, we have two personnel that's replacing four. Go back to that slide real quick. Go back to that slide real quick.
There are two additional staff members. Pete may be able to explain how many people he has dealing with meters.
That's a.
Yes, we.
How many people work on that project?
There's at least seven or eight meter technicians, but we added two more to make sure that we were replacing these outdated meters so that the revenue could come in and it was revenue sufficient.
That's a lot of work.
So going back to this, we had two programs. So we have the radio, and then we also are replacing outdated.
Yes.
Two separate things. Okay.
Because a lot of the meters were put in during the boom here in Flagler County, '03 to '05, and so now they're at their, end of their life and needing to put the new meters. And sometimes residents are shocked by when an old meter is replaced with a new meter and they see a different bill, and that's because the new meter is reading accurately.
So, so moving on, wastewater treatment facility number one has been in continuous operation for more than 40 years. During the preliminary engineering study, the existing facility was analyzed and determined that the necessary and recommended R and R upgrades to meet current and forthcoming regulatory requirements, as well as provide an efficient integrated facility, would be to complete the conversion to AWT. There's some, there's an environmental benefit by being able to better protect surface waters, wetlands, and recharge in the superficial aquifer by having a higher quality discharge of effluent. The conversion is being funded primarily with the fiscal year 28 bond. So this is a regulatory requirement, an anticipated future mandate. It's an integration benefit by same treatment process as our expansion. An environmental, it reduces phosphorus and nitrogen levels, and it's cost-effective to be done with our current expansion and as well as integration with the same system between existing and new plant. So Project 26, our pep system R and R. So this here is our replacement program of our existing pep tanks. So as they age, we, they need to be replaced. Where again, we're looking at tanks and ways to make them better sealed up for that INI. We're also looking, we also have air release valve maintenance program replacement. So that's part of our pep system. And our goal is to, you know, maintain these and reduce our INI in our system. So this is, this here is an important slide to cover our gravity sewer manhole lining. So it's a critical initiative. It's designed to systematically and cost-effectively reduce inflow and infiltration. That's INI that we've been talking about within the wastewater system. Currently, 233,000 feet of gravity sewer mains and 6,800 manholes still require lining to maintain system integrity. However, you know, due to our shortfall in R and R funds, we, we've been unable to properly fund this program to, to address those items. So, you know, obviously, you know, only emergency repairs are currently being addressed and we're, so it's forcing a rather reactive than proactive approach. And, you know, having to deal with system failures are, continue to escalate and higher long-term costs for potential service disruptions as well. So, you know, the benefits are reduction in emergency repairs, reducing our INI, cost savings by reducing amount of wastewater treatment, and assist in reducing our peak flows at our wastewater plant. So this here is funded with our 28 bond and the 25 bond. It's both bonds are helping move this program along. So why do we need the rate increase? So utility system is a critical element for Palm Coast that requires funding necessary to revitalize our existing infrastructure, provide safe drinking water, and a wastewater system that will not harm residents or their environment, and to provide infrastructure for economic growth to attract industrial and commercial development that will provide employment opportunities. The utility department has taken all necessary steps to minimize the financial impact to Palm Coast residents. Some actions taken include completing a strategic action plan that included items such as optimizing operations, planning for future regulatory needs, and upkeep of existing infrastructure, sought out and continue to seek state appropriations and grants, reviewed fees and charges that resulted in increase in impact fees paid by new development, as well as recovering costs for, for those assessed through utility charges. And this is my last slide. So are there any other questions before I turn this presentation over to Murray Hamilton?
Any questions, counsel? Councilman Miller?
Uh, sorry. Carl, can you talk about INI? I'm not sure everybody fully understands the topic, so because it's so important, I think that should be clarified.
So INI, so one of the big things that came up with our consent decree with DEP was our INI in our system. And that occurs, you know, twofold. One, we have pipes in the ground that are sometimes surrounded by water. The water table's high. We have older pipes, especially a gravity sewer. Depending on the type of pipes, you have joints that fail, pipes that go into manhole, you got loose connections, water gets into the system. So whether it's groundwater or it's during storm events when roads are underwater, water gets in the manholes, water gets into the pep tanks, water just gets into the wastewater system, and then it has to be treated by the wastewater plant. So you're treating sewage and stormwater or groundwater.
So basically, we're, when trying to treat wastewater, we're experiencing a lot of stormwater coming into that. And so it's increasing the, the usage of our plants from stormwater rather than wastewater.
It's overwhelming.
Supplementing it.
Yes, correct.
And I do have a question for you, Carl. I know you said you weren't here during the 2018 study, but do you know why the expansion of wastewater treatment plan one was not contemplated?
That, I, I do not know. I was, I was here at the city, I just was not part of the rate study at that time.
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
I do not know why it was or was not in the study. I was here at the city, but I was not a, a part of that rate study.
I'm sorry. I should have clarified. Not in this position.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So city manager, do we have any information on that?
Does any, is anyone on staff, were they here during that, that 2018?
Mr. Russell, do you, any thoughts on the timeline?
I've made an observation from Carl's presentation. If you go back to the wastewater demand slides, right about the time either during that rate study or shortly after that rate study, there was more than a 30% increase in the demand on the wastewater system. And so I think the INI that Carl was just talking about somehow occurred either at the time that the rate study was being conducted or shortly thereafter and consumed about 30% of your capacity.
And that was about the time our new wastewater plant was coming online, so those, those probably thought processes, some flows shifting to Plant Two. Because I know there was some work done with forced main along Pine Lakes Parkway to get flows and master pump station on Matanzas that was going to be directing flows. So we're making assumptions, you know, I'm just.
Is it safe to assume that INI increases over time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's going to get worse if we don't fix it.
Correct.
Did you have anything to add, Mr. Russell?
Yes, Peter Russell, Deputy Director, Utility. I was involved with the 2018 study as well, but I can tell you that from a certain perspective that the, the wastewater expansion project wasn't a comprehensive plan for 2035. We did a little bit of a change. We pushed it up a little bit to, we've already started it, but the plan was to do that in 20, 2030. I'm sorry, 2030, so.
Can I answer a question?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Okay, Murray, your turn.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, again for the record, my name is Murray Hamilton. I'm the Vice President and Certified Public Accountant of Rothaus Financial Consultants. We're a utility rate and financial consulting firm. Obviously, I had an opportunity to present to the city council at the February 11th workshop. That was an hours-long presentation that night. What we tried to do for this particular evening is compile just a brief executive summary of some of those major slides that we covered.
There we go. Okay. And so, so during that February 11th workshop, we did cover a number of various topics. We talked about the existing conditions of the utility system and addressing the fact that the system had incurred increased costs due to prolonged inflation. The fact that the city needs to add new personnel in order to maintain existing levels of service, as well as to meet the needs of new growth. The fact that the utility system lost opportunities to have increased revenues by delaying rate adjustments from, from what was previously proposed and lost opportunities related to various grants and appropriations that the city has sought. We certainly covered the, the major capital project needs. You know, Carl was reviewing those with the city council here just a few moments ago. Very specifically, what we attempted to do was to work in conjunction with city staff as well as the city's municipal financial advisor to look for ways to fund the total capital improvement program. Granted, there were a number of projects in there that had been delayed. A large portion of the, of the bond issuance does relate to capital maintenance. And so I think a question earlier was about sustainability, sustainability of the rate path if the city council elects to approve it. Our, our strategy as it relates to capital maintenance is, is twofold. One, to increase the annual transfer to the renewal and replacement fund to 15% of gross revenues, which by the way, was a recommendation in the last rate study that never got approved and never got implemented because the rates weren't adopted. So step one is to make sure that we're funding that on an ongoing basis. And this, and then where we had appropriate capital maintenance that had become deferred to include a portion of that in the long-term financing strategy in both the Series 2026 as well as the 2028 bonds, which again, we feel is appropriate. Along, a lot of these assets are, are long-lived improvements that are going to live beyond 30 years or more, and, and it makes sense to fund those improvements over a longer period of time. We, we addressed the major assumptions related to the business plan and the business attributes of the utility system from customer sales and revenue growth of approximately 3% per year on average, as well as the inflationary pressures on the operating and maintenance expenses of the utility system. We went through very much detail of the capital funding program and the financial alternatives that we prepared in consultation with your city staff, as well as your municipal financial advisor. We reviewed together the adequacy of the water, wastewater, potable irrigation, and reclaimed water rates. And we presented two scenarios with one being recommended, and we provided the city council some sample bill comparisons. We then highlighted for the city council at least what we felt would be the next steps. The first of which is this first reading here tonight, that where the city council is considering the proposed rate path. As Carl talked about earlier, you know, we also provide the, provided the city council with what steps looking forward might look like in order to issue those, that first bond issue. In order to make sure that the city obtains bond proceeds as, as early as October of 2025 to meet that design and construction period that, that Carl has highlighted the importance of. And talking about the capital improvement projects, again, Carl went through these very much at length. Over the next five years, from fiscal year 2025 through 2029, Carl's identified, or the city has identified 614 million in capital improvements. 63% are directly related to capacity-related improvements that will benefit new development, and 37% address capital maintenance. Again, what you're seeing on slide three here this evening, these, these are the critical project items that have been earmarked to be financed with long-term debt, again, to be repaid through rates over a period of 30 years or more. They represent approximately 74% of the overall capital improvement program.
I'm sorry, Murray, can you go back for a second?
Yes, sir.
That first part you said about how much for future growth and how much for capital maintenance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Say those numbers again.
Yes, sir. So, so of that plan, and again, this came from Carl's earlier presentation, 63% of the, the total program costs are allocable to capacity-related improvements, both water and wastewater, and 37% to capital maintenance, again, both water and wastewater. And that's, and that's the total program, Mr.?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Slide four is a comparison of the financing scenario. So, so again, for the purposes of the rate study, we had identified a Series 2026 bond issue, again, as early as October of 2025. I, I think I said earlier it was 286, somebody else was closer, I heard in the audience, 284 million for, for that first series of bond issue. Series 2028 bond issue is estimated to be 172 million, as you heard from, from Carl earlier this evening. You know, that, that second bond issue is to be determined, especially if we have an opportunity to look at external funding sources, be it via grants, or even this taking advantage of the state revolving fund loan program that Carl explained earlier tonight. The, the issue with the state revolving fund loan is, is the repayments over 20 years, not 30, but oftentimes it's at a much lower interest rate, like 0% as, as Carl alluded to. The primary issue with the state revolving fund loan is there's a cap, an annual cap for the wastewater system of no more than $20 million a year. So, so when you're trying to walk through a capital program like the city has, they're going to have to take little baby steps in order to access that program to take advantage of those savings. We, we, like I said, we worked with the city's financial advisor. They prepared four financing scenarios that we went through at length at the February 11th workshop. You can see that slide here on slide four. Isolating scenarios one and three, those were the, the two primary cases that were determined, that were most optimal for the city and the overall impacts on rates, and they were selected to, to run our scenarios on. Scenario two and four is a point of reference. Take advantage of mechanisms to capitalize on interest costs in the short term and to defer principal payments, and it just adds more cost to the system, which results in a higher rate for the customer. So that's why we're not considering scenarios two and four. For scenario one, if you look earlier, early in this forecast period, and what you're seeing here is the total existing and future senior lien obligations of the utility system over time. Early in our forecast period, when we look at scenario one in the solid green bar, you'll see that there's a spike in the debt service payments. It's approximately $5 million more per year in the first five to seven years of repayment when compared to scenario three. Scenario three that looks at the overall financing structure more holistically and extends the, the payments over a longer period of time, results in a rate path that is 8% less per month by fiscal year 2029, while also helping to balance the overall rate equity within the system, since future customers are largely going to benefit from these improvements. By the way, an 8% savings is approximately $6 to $7 less per month for the typical residential bill.
This is between scenario one and three?
That is correct.
And just for clarity, I think I asked this in our meeting, but I don't think I mentioned it last time we workshop this, but which of these scenarios constitute the lowest overall cost between, you know, between those scenarios? Which one costs less for the, for the whole debt service?
I, I appreciate you bringing that up. So we did cover this in, in the February 11th workshop. It's a trade-off. It's a balance between the lowest possible cost versus the lowest possible rate impact. Scenario one, by definition, is in fact the lowest possible cost. I, I think there's a footnote on my next slide that, that highlights that. Scenario three, in the long-term, over a 30-year payback, has a higher cost of, I believe it's around $20 million over an extended period of time, of which the city's going to add new customers to help cover a portion of those costs. But again, by definition, as I, as I talked about, while scenario one has the lowest total payout over the bond issue, scenario three has the lower rate impact.
So the reason for the recommendation of scenario three is for that, that even though it saves some money over time?
Right. It's actually two-part. It's actually two-part. Mathematically, in terms of the customer who's repaying- Mathematically, in terms of the customer who's repaying those bonds, it's the lowest-cost option. So I like that aspect of it. The second point of reference is if you notice over time under scenario one, that's the green bar, you notice how the payments decline? That means that the future customer's rate could potentially decline under that scenario, when they are largely benefiting from those improvements, at the cost of customers earlier in the forecast period who had to pay $5 million more per year for years five through seven. So again, the second point I like about scenario three is it helps balance who pays when they're benefiting from those improvements, and that's why you see the payment schedule staying level over that 30-year period.
Right, so essentially, we're keeping that level to impact, our debt service is staying level, our payments due are staying level. The other scenario is essentially paying more upfront to reduce our debt service faster so that we have less financing charges, essentially.
Right, that's correct. And again, I personally think it's an equity issue of charging existing customers today for an asset that's going to benefit future customers, and scenario three is a better option that helps balance that equity.
Gotcha, yeah. I mean, from a purely financial world, you know, I think we would all advocate even our personal finances to pay everything down as quickly as we possibly can so that we're paying less in the long term. But I understand that you're weighing multiple things here, especially the impact of rates on our residents.
Yes, sir. So again, we put together the two broad scenarios, scenario one and three. One of the things I'd like to highlight again tonight, like we did at the workshop and several times before that, you know, our preliminary results, the rate path, was 15% rate adjustments each year for the first three years. That was our preliminary path. And again, we worked at length with city staff to enhance and prioritize the capital improvement program that Carl's gone through. We did that several times. And then we sought advice from professionals, from your municipal financial advisor, about strategies, about how to overcome some of the shortfalls and to finance the projects. What you're seeing on slide five here is we have a four-year rate plan in lieu of the annual index provision. So the rate adjustments that you're seeing here on slide five are inclusive of any index. And then in fiscal year 2029, we're estimating that the annual index provision may be adequate going forward. Again, as Carl pointed out, there's going to be a few checks and balance here along the way. One, city council approves an annual budget. That's step one. Step two is as the city looks to pursue bond proceeds, either in that first and/or second bond issue, a formal feasibility study will have to be done to affirm that the rates are going to be adequate to repay those bonds. So there's going to be some checks and balances, you know, along the way. But setting that aside, the planning doesn't stop. You know, the city should continue to update and reevaluate these plans every three to five years, and certainly I think that process that I laid out for you will do that. When, you can see here, again, on this slide, that the first adjustment, if approved, would begin as early as April 1st of 2025. The second adjustment would start as early as October 1st, also of 2025. And that's intentional, to do an interim rate adjustment in 2025 to try and break things up a little bit so that the city's customers can walk through the incremental increases of the rate adjustments. If we did not have an interim adjustment in 2025, then the 2026 adjustment would almost be double what it is. It would be a double-digit increase, and we were attempting to avoid that. So again, the strategy here was to try to set the rate level as low as possible, as flat as possible, for as long as possible, and get the utility system back to a situation where we think the annual index provision may be sustainable. Again, that's to be determined. Now, when evaluating the overall revenue sufficiency, we reviewed with you our study goals and considerations. First and foremost, and I think I heard this comment earlier tonight, reserve fund requirements. You know, not only does the city has an adopted policy related to those reserve funds, but the lending community, the rating agencies, the bondholders, want to make sure that we're maintaining a reserve fund level in excess of 120 days of our annual revenues. And so you're going to see an identifier here that shows us days of gross revenues, and by the way, how we're spinning those revenues down. We're spinning those revenues down because we're applying them to the capital program, and we're trying to avoid doing higher rate increases earlier. Instead, we've made them a little bit lower and consistent over time. So the audit that's going to come out later this month, assuming it's approved by city council, it's going to show reserve balances in there. I've worked diligently with your finance director to reconcile those items at the end of fiscal year 2024, and we've applied those monies appropriately, first and foremost, to that capital program. And so again, you can see by this rate plan, we're utilizing those reserves to the benefit of the customers. Second component in those goals and considerations are our compliance tests. So we have our bond resolution, our other lending documents through the state revolving fund loan, that really tells us what we can do with money. Talk about checks and balances. It's literally a flow of funds. Where we put the money, when we collect it into the revenue fund, how we can spend those monies. We have to pay operating expenses first. Secondly, we have to cover our senior lien bond payments. And then thirdly, we get to work on our capital program and working capital requirements. So we have to meet our compliance tests. That's what you're seeing there on slide five in reference to test A and C. Lastly is our net cash flow, and you'll see that in the next slide. So we have to get to a point where we have a break-even cash flow, a well-balanced budget. And when we get to the next slide, you'll see that in two of the three fiscal years that we've projected here, we are planning to use reserves to bridge that gap. And again, not to fail to reiterate, because we're adjusting rates less than what we otherwise would if we did not use those reserves. Again, that's our goal. When looking at scenario three, again, this is our recommended case for the various reasons that we outlined a few minutes ago. The recommended adjustments are 8% per year for the four-year period, and in year five, fiscal year 2029, we're estimating that the annual index provision would be adequate in order to meet the needs of the system. When looking at, we've got some sample bills there, residential bill at 2,500 gallons per month, and a residential bill based on 4,000 gallons per month. And again, those are common bills rendered within your system. Now granted, we do have customers, about 20% of the customer base does use water at 6,000 gallons or more. So they do affect the average, but the...
How many, what was that again?
20%.
20% of our users.
Mr. Mayor, of the residential customers.
Water conservation.
And so again, these are comparable bills, but if you looked at the projected bill in 2029 under scenario three relative to scenario one, you would see that those bills are approximately $6 to $7 less, 8% less, under scenario three, and that's our recommended case.
I have a question before we move on.
Yes, ma'am, please.
What are the rates at now? So I see you have the interim 10, 1, 24. What are we looking at right now for 2,500 and 4,000 gallons?
Yes, ma'am. So the interim rate is the 3% index that the city council implemented on October 1 of the current year. So in that kind of middle column, for a residential customer with water and wastewater service at 2,500 gallons, that current bill's $73.23. That's the current bill today. For a customer using 4,000 gallons, it's $90.73.
Okay, so that's with the 3% CIP that was already approved?
That has already been approved. Those are the current rates.
Got it. And are these numbers, both usage and base rate?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay.
So this is the collective bill, water and wastewater service, it includes the minimum monthly base charge as well as the variable charges.
Thank you.
For customers outside of the city limit, it does not include the surcharge. So we need to keep in mind that for customers outside the city limit, the city, just like many municipal governments, has an outside-city surcharge that does apply.
And that surcharge will be increased along with our rate increase?
Well, the surcharge is a fixed percent. But you're correct, if the bill goes up and the percent is a fixed percent, the dollar amount of the surcharge will go up.
And just for clarity, that's 25%?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yep. Did you have comments? Okay. So slide six, again, this is that third criteria. At some point, we need to get the utility system to a balanced budget. And so you can see on slide six, by fiscal year 2029, we are getting to a break-even cash flow. Granted, in two of the five years, we are using reserves in order to help bridge that cash flow, again, combined with our rate strategy under scenario three. So point of reference, in fiscal year 2026, we're committing $6.3 million in that year to cover the shortfall. In fiscal year 2028, we're committing $5.4 million to cover that shortfall. That doesn't necessarily account for the other reserve funds, the impact fee reserves, and the other operating reserves that we're committing on the capital plan side as well. So again, this is just to affect the annual cash flows that we have here that impact the overall operations of the utility system. Our next slide, we have, again, those bill comparisons. There are many reasons rates are different among various utilities. Source of supply is a critical factor. You know, Carl laid out, the city has multiple types of water supply, which comes with different levels of treatment that need to take place. Disposal options are different. Access to availability of grants, age of the system and infrastructure, the density and size of the utility system, and whether you're going through a growth cycle, or if you're a mature community and you're approaching build-out. All of those factors affect what the overall rate paths are. So on the left side of this chart, we have what I'm calling a small user. It's a residential water wastewater bill, 2,500 gallons. Madam Vice Mayor, you can see that the current charge is $73.23, and if the rate path is approved, the proposed bill beginning on and after April 1st of 2025 would be $79.08. And the rates here that are represented with the other survey utilities are their current charges as well, which many of them, City of Melbourne, Port St. Lucie, St. Augustine, Edgewater, Charlotte County, I know that they're all actively involved in rate studies. And so, you know, none of these utility systems are going to be sitting status quo. They're all addressing similar situations that the city of Palm Coast is facing. Two data points I'd like to give you that did not make it on these charges, or on these charts, and that's the current rates for Flagler Beach. So for a customer using 2,500 gallons, for Flagler Beach, the current charge is $1036. For the second chart, the moderate chart, Flagler Beach, the current charge for 4,000 gallons of residential water and wastewater use is $125.44. And so again, that did not make it in our survey at the time that we put it together. So again, those are the representative bill comparisons. Again, I've worked around the state of Florida for over 20 years specifically in utilities and rates. Many of my clients are going through the same situations for various reasons, just like the city of Palm Coast. We went through our recommendations as we presented on February 11th. First and foremost, that the existing rates are not adequate to fully fund the projected revenue requirements of the system over our forecast period. Again, for the interests of this study, we've looked out over a five-year period. As Carl alluded, at some point, city staff's going to be providing a 10-year forecast to the city council. I will say, from practicality reasons and from experience, it's very difficult to plan rates for a 10-year period. So again, it's just, it's information. The city's financial advisor helped in preparing several financing scenarios and strategies to help phase in the rates and address the shortfall in the overall capital funding program. Scenario three is based on the wrapped around, the holistic bond structure without the use of capitalized interest. I believe it provides a balance between the city's phase strategy and a level of repayment schedule over the financing term. A customer bill is approximately 8% less under scenario three than when compared to scenario one. Again, that's about $6 or $7 less per month, per year by fiscal year 2029. We recommend that the city implement the proposed rate adjustments identified under scenario three, beginning with bills rendered on and after April 1st, 2025, and each October 1st thereafter through October 1st of 2027. Beginning on and after October 1st of 2028, the city should consider increasing the monthly rates based on the annual change in the CPI index. Again, this is a CPI index geared specifically for water and sewer utilities, as it will be published on June 30th of each year, but not less than 4%. And 4% is the 10-year running average of that particular index. Now, with the rate recommendations, again, the first bond issue that we've identified, and again, the actual proceeds are to be determined. You would walk through a feasibility study, you'd have an opportunity to refine what those borrowing needs are actually going to be before those bonds are issued. But with the prospective bond issue in mind, on or about October of 2025, you know, when we talked about our next steps at the workshop, you know, the first process was to look at adopting the rates. Probably somewhere between May and June, the city would want to pursue their financing team, which would be led by your municipal financial advisor. It would include your bond counsel and disclosure counsel. It would include a feasibility consultant if I was selected, among other professionals, an engineering consultant as well. So it's a very broad and professional team that would advance the city's process through issuing those bonds. There's a rating process that takes place. One of the starting points is what's the rate level? And the city council certainly has flexibility. We're asking the city council to consider adopting a firm four-year rate path with an annual index provision starting in that fifth year. And I think if you had asked your municipal financial advisor, they would tell you that that's your highest and best credit opportunity, is to lock in a rate path. That does not mean that the city council cannot revisit what that rate path looks like for a number of various reasons during that five-year period of time. And so this is really the first part, the first reading, the first step in that bond process. And again, as I heard from Carl earlier tonight, a large portion of that first bond issue is going to go towards curing those wastewater plant deficiencies for which we're under consent order. I believe with that, I think we're in questions and answers, Mr. Mayor.
And I probably just want to add on quickly to that. I know we spoke a lot about rates tonight, but the ordinance also does include the charges, which is in the ordinance, and those have been finalized. There were a few updates as we QC'd and modified and put together those numbers. So that is in the packet and attached to the ordinance as an exhibit.
Carl, on that, I saw the communications going back and forth regarding the changes that were made. Was there a change made specifically to the septic connection fees?
Yeah, I believe the pep tank connection dropped slightly. I think it was 852, and it went down to 700 and something dollars. It went down a little bit slightly as we revisited actual costs with invoicing and vendor POs and did our quality control with our finance team.
So I'm kind of summarizing the communications that I saw back and forth, but from what I could ascertain, there was a discussion as to whether or not those services are contracted out or done in-house? Is that correct?
I have not read through that correspondence. The pep tank installs are contracted out. We used to do a lot of those in-house with the extent of how much we have. I believe we have two vendors that do the pep tank installs. That is covered by our capacity fees. Then we have the connection of the pep tank to the lateral connection, and that is what we are recouping. We do provide the vendor with materials to make that connection. The gravity connections are done by the general contractor. So the goal was to even out the field of what was being paid by the operating fund and what was being paid by capacity. So the operating fund shouldn't be, for, in a new home, shouldn't be paid by... So, the operating fund shouldn't be for, and then a new home shouldn't be paid by the utility operating. And so, those are what we are charging back to and adding to the, the new home builder.
The costs, though, as listed in the amended schedule, these should be at full cost recovery, correct?
Full cost recovery, exactly.
Okay. And do these also have the same CIP increases year after year?
They have a, an ability to. They will be evaluated every year to see if material costs, you know, say the water meter costs go up and other costs go up. So, we have ability to increase them based on a review, but we do not have to increase them, is the way it's written in there.
Are we assuming costs will not increase?
We know costs will increase. That's why we built that in there, that we have ability to.
So, why are we making it automatic? I, that's, I, that, I guess that's the crux of the question.
Well, our goal is to be cost recovering, so we didn't want to overcharge.
Right.
So, say we get a five-year fixed rate from a vendor. I doubt that's going to happen, but, you know.
So, I guess, here's my concern, okay? That it won't be policed. So, if, if we can make sure there's a mechanism in the ordinance to ensure that there's a quality control check already worked in every single year. On this date, this will happen, and within 30 days, any increases that we've seen to make this full cost recovery will be implemented. We want to take the subjectivity out of it and make sure that this is something that is done on schedule.
We, we did review this for the finance director today about where we are putting those fees that are being collected in those expenses so they can be cross-connected. The revenue coming in and expenses going out are going to be tied together and checked.
Okay, so that mechanism is already worked into how this is written?
It hasn't, well, internally, our internal processes are going to be done that way for the upcoming budget. So, we were thinking ahead and, and planning that effort. So, we had that information readily available and easily, easily to track.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
Yeah, just, just to follow up on that. So, what you're saying is from an accounting practice, we're linking those together so it's easily accessible information. So, when we go to determine what our costs are for these services, we can increase the fees to match so that we're not losing money on that.
Correct. Those are for the ones, you know, especially when we have a vendor, like on the pep tanks, but like the water meter where we do the install and we have our, our staff time and equipment and those burdened rates. You know, that, that's a little bit more internal work that would have to be done that we, you know, we don't track our time that way. But we can track at least the purchases of the materials or when we hire vendors to that. So, there'd still be some internal QC work that has to be done for self-performed work with, say, the water meter connections or tech connection.
And so, we were talking about, I think this conversation was annually. What I saw before, we're talking about the same fees, I believe. But what I saw before in the previous presentation was not more than five years to be reworking those fees.
Correct. I, I, I put it in there. So, basically, when we do a rate study, we, we would be looking at the charges, the rates, and the impact fees all together every five years, four to five years.
I would advocate for a faster timeline, not just because of the, the potential cost to the city, but also, you know, when you're trying to get multiple things on board, multiple businesses, stakeholders on board with, you know, changes in rates, it's, it's a lot harder to eat everything at once, right? When you say, okay, we haven't talked about this in five years. Similar to what we're talking about right now, where it's, rates were not increased for years and years and years and years at the cost of the city, and then boom, here's 100% increase in certain fees. People say, wait, where did this number come from? It's never been this much. Why would it be this much? I would advocate for having a, a shorter cycle here to try to make sure that it's not hitting everybody all at once. And, and we're talking about the, the miscellaneous fees. So, it's not, it's not user rates. We're not talking about resident user rates here. We're talking about mostly fees that are passed on to builders, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah. So, just to make sure that we're not losing money in the interim as well as they're not getting hit with a big increase all at once, especially when we're doing rate studies that include impact fees. So, you're adding to impact fees. We're going to add those impact fees in, and then we're also going to, you know, raise those rates 30%. That's a, that's a huge chunk all at once, right? So, I would advocate for that.
So, correct me if I, I agree with you that I, you know, I don't want to hit any market with heavy rates all at one time. But I think part of, I think there's two problems. Correct me if I'm wrong. One, those miscellaneous charges haven't really been analyzed. At least from the 2018 study, I didn't see that they were analyzed very closely. So, it's been quite some time that they've been looked at. Some of these fees were zero. There were no fees, and we're implementing fees for the first time, several of them, actually. But correct me if I'm wrong, you did say that there's an internal process to do it yearly, right? So, that it's not being done just every five years?
Right, that, that was correct.
Okay, so does that alleviate the issue?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, I wasn't sure because of the previous presentation, I saw the five-year kind of cycle. So, just wanted to make sure.
The five years, we would do it with the rate consultant involved to reanalyze all the data. But we would be reviewing all the information every year, determining if we needed to make an adjustment.
Okay, so those would be corrected yearly. And then, the overall system of user rates, impact fees, things like that would then be reevaluated no greater than five, every five years.
And Mr. Miller, we recognize a communications gap, and we can definitely do better about making sure that that information gets to them in an ample amount of time for them to review that material.
Anything else?
I don't have any more questions.
Councilman Gambero. Murray, because this is going to come up again. Your professional opinion, and I, I take you at face value. You're very professional, you're a numbers guy. Would you say that it's fair to say that the city in its history, its short 25-year history, the impact fees have not kept up with the rate of growth? Would that be a fair assessment?
It's a fair assessment, but it's not limited to Palm Coast.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a practicality. You know, as we talked about at our workshop as well as in, in prior meetings, you know, the water and wastewater systems are, are really capital intensive. You know, the, the backbone plants, the transmission facilities, all of that has to be in place on day one. And so, you know, we were talking about bonds earlier tonight and, and some, some concern about taking on risk that we're going to be repaying that over a 30-year period. You, you can't construct a plant on a pay-as-you-go basis, and, and you're not going to have the ability to collect impact fees in advance of construction that plant, constructing that plant. So, so initially, it's, you're always in a recoupment situation of recovering the costs that you've already spent. Now, once you move from that first day of construction, you do get to augment the system, and that's, that's where the city finds itself today. And I think Carl said it earlier tonight. The highest and best use of those impact fees is to apply it to the capital improvement program first. We, we could have applied more impact fees to the wastewater plant project, but that would have taken money away from those other little projects that are out there. And instead of issuing bonds for 15 projects, we'd be issuing bonds for 40 projects. You know, so, so again, we, we take the impact fees. We try to apply them to the highest and best use on the capital program to try and avoid borrowing new debt going into the future. But Mr. Mayor, as you pointed out, you're, we're always in a recoupment period. I won't say that, well, the legislature did not do public utilities and, and, and local governments a benefit when they updated that Florida statute. They capped any increase in the impact fee to no greater than 50%. And, and again, and it has to be phased in over a four-year period. So, you're literally set up in a position not to be able to recover 100% of those costs.
Going along with that, Murray.
Yes, sir.
I've heard, I've heard recently that the state legislature is five to seven years behind the rate of growth and, and increasing the impact fees as they should be. Would that be a fair assessment? You think the legislature is lagging behind?
Well, I, I, I think in the last five to seven years, they've very much made aggressive adjustments to the Impact Fee Act at the benefit of new development.
Okay, thank you for that. I think I had another one, but it skips me right now.
Mayor, just sorry. On that same note, you mentioned the surcharge earlier. That is also dictated by state statute, and we are charging the max at 25% for outside our city limits for services.
Okay, how often are we allowed to increase that?
Well, we're at the max.
I'm saying how often? When's, when would be the next time that, that's it? We're maxed out, that's it?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm sorry.
It's proportional.
Yeah.
Rates are my sandbox. So, so the, the legislature has, has currently allowed for an outside city surcharge, not to exceed 25%. That, that's what the city manager was referring to. That's the maximum that you could charge. You could revisit your surcharge level anytime you absolutely want to, but you cannot increase it above 25%.
Above 25%?
Yes, sir.
As an aside, just for the public's benefit before public comment, we did increase the impact fees to the max we could. Last year, when we did the first rate study, we decided to raise the impact fees, not raise the resident fees. So, they're at the max right now.
Not to be revisited for a couple more years. And that was something that I was going to add, is that, you know, state law limits the, the rates for impact fees as well as the collection of them and how often we can adjust them. And then also heavily regulates the use of them for only expansion or growth-related projects. So, to the largest extent allowed by law, we have raised those rates to try to capture as much money from development as possible so that we can pay for these things. But as mentioned, it will never, the way the law is written, it will never capture the full cost. You, you do these every four years. So, in year one, if the recommendation is to increase it 50%, which is capped, so maybe it needed to be 70%, but it's capped. Maybe in year one, you're collecting what the cost of building something today is. But years two, three, and four, you're not. And then additionally, when you go to build something with those impact fees, that's always in the future as well. So, the cost of building has gone up as well. So, you're getting kind of hit two different ways with inflation there that doesn't allow us to capture it. And it's not because we don't want to. It's not because we, we don't want to use those fees to pay. It's because we're, we're limited by state law.
Yeah, if I may too, just for some historical perspective for the city, because this is of the fault of nobody sitting here and nobody in the back either. There was a reduction in our impact fees in 2013. They reduce the impact fees, I believe, because of the recession and the slowing growth. And then when they raised them back up, they actually, one of them did not even raise back up to the pre-13, 2013 level. So, we were undercharging significantly for impact fees for a while as well. And so, now here we are, kind of suffering continuous consequences of that.
Okay, Mr. Blocker, I would like to ask, I don't know if we should discuss this before we open it up for public comment, but as far as we had the discussion at our previous workshop about shifting, shifting some of the rates and stuff to non-avalorem, should we discuss that now before we open it up for public comments or after?
Mayor, it's, it's, it's a little of the board. If you'd like to discuss it now.
Well, well, I'd rather discuss it now so the general public would understand where I'm coming from on this here. During, during our other workshops, we talked about other municipalities, you know, outside the state, inside the state, specifically Oakland Park, Florida, and up in Clay County and maybe St. John's County. But what I would propose, what I, what I feel would help the residents is shifting some of those base services over to non-avalorem tax. And my reasoning behind that is you, you have, if you have a mortgage, you have an escrow account, and you have that count, you know, they have the, the plus up for whatever your fees are going to be. Now, Helena had mentioned something about there's a bit of a transition, and we'd have to figure out how to do that. But I'm for moving those, those base rates. And I would go as far as saying the base rate for water, base rate for sewage, base rate for stormwater, or stormwater, not base rate, and garbage, shift that over to non-avalorem. That would, for my bill along, for my bill at my house, Tracy and I, we use probably about 4,500 gallons a, a month, two people, that's $109 a month off your city utility bill. And then you just have your, your base, your base, your, your usage rate, your sewage usage rate, usage rate, and then you can use that escrow account to save that money, you know, where you're not hit in the face. Now, there are some people that it, it's going to have a dramatic effect on. Though, and we talked about this last night at the American Legion, people that are 100% disabled, they don't have a tax bill. But with this, if we take this approach, they would receive a bill every year. And say for me, for our family, it'd be $1,300 a year. That's non-avalorem, and we'd also have to figure out how to do the 4% rebate or reduction in costs that happens every year at, at the county once, if you pay your tax bill on time. There are certain ways we can work it out, but others, other municipalities also have, and we mentioned this last time, we don't have the FPNL franchise fee. We don't have it. We don't have a utility fee, uh, uh, fee. We don't have that either. Other municipalities have fire and other, other fees incorporated in their non-avalorem assessments. But I think this for the, the normal homeowner, that would be a significant reduction in their monthly costs, and that bill wouldn't be slapping them in the face every month. At a, like our bill, I think this past bill was like $165, $170. But is that something the council would be willing to entertain moving forward once we decide what we're going to do with this?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm willing to work with that. I think that's a beneficial thing to kind of split that out, one, because it can be prepaid slowly over time, or actually it's assessed in arrears. So, you know, that's a benefit. As well as I think a, a huge benefit not mentioned is that when we get our bill, everybody says it's my water bill. Well, it's your water bill, it's your wastewater, it's your, you know, it's everything, all in one thing. So, I think it would be better if it was kind of broken out so you can see what your actual water bill is versus all of the services that are kind, kind of combined into one bill. So, I think that provides more clarity to the residents as well.
I think it's a, I think it's a good approach, but, you know, I'm not the smartest person up here, I'm sure. So, what, what is?
Mayor, I, I appreciate the creativity, and I'm definitely willing to look a little closer at it. But forgive me if I'm being a little simple about this, but it seems to me that it's just moving it from one bill to another.
Well, it is, but it relieves that pressure that every month, slapping someone in the face.
Maybe at first, but, but I'm looking at this from the perspective of, I know, I dread every year when my escrow statement comes in, I'm like, please don't be a shortage, please don't be a shortage, because I don't want to have that big bill. In addition to paying taxes, you know, income taxes, three, four months later as well. So, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to further consider it and look at the real impacts and maybe, you know, and analyze this a little bit more. But my initial inclination is I don't know if it, at the end of the day, will truly make a difference in the homeowners' month-to-month expenses. So, I mean, and that's the end goal, and that's what you're trying to reach. So, I, again, I'd be willing to look at it a little bit closer, but I think that has to be the end game in mind, is does this actually decrease the pressure on our residents on a month-to-month basis?
They might be telling us when they come up for public comments. So, we're going to have their, we're going to have their feedback to go on.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got, I've just got some thoughts. So, Mr. Murray, thanks for laying out this great analysis. I, I think it, especially over time and the reasons why and how the bonding works and, you know, how we need to have that capital ready to move in order to, to, to have the bonding in place. Again, Mr. Mayor, I, I like the creativity too. I just don't know enough about it and what the analysis would be with the impacts. My concern is if we delay action, it's going to be more expensive.
No, we're not going to delay.
Okay.
We're not delaying implementing anything.
Okay, so you're just saying, hey, let's look at it?
When we come up to the budget cycle and moving in, into the new, the new year, we will have to have Helena and the city manager figure out what kind of mechanisms or what kind of moves we have to make to make it happen without a dramatic impact on the residents as far as how the billing is done.
Okay, that's helpful. I, I thought, I thought you were saying doing it now.
No, no, this is just, so moving into the next budget cycle, we're going to have to figure it out.
Yep, yes, Mayor, thank you for the clarification for that. I think this is definitely a great strategic action plan priority to have because this would need to have some budgeted studies around it. We need to work through legal. There's the factor of, you know, your trash services might be the easiest one to come off first. So, we would, you know, need to make sure it's in the SAP and then also have a future work. and then also have a future workshop just surrounding the analysis. But I did ask our Director of Public Works, Mr. Mansell, to just go ahead and put together a high-level analysis for us. And then we're working through legal with that. And then we'll bring that to you soon.
Okay, and I'll close this with this before we go to public comment and I can get some feedback from you guys. We are under an FDEP consent order. So, these are things we have to do. Through no fault of anybody in this room, you know, it's just the circumstances. I will say, there has been some bad leadership. There's been some bad management and impact fees we talked about. But we are in this situation as a community and we have to do what's right. And I can tell you that we have overpromised on water. Our city has overpromised on water and past leadership has not kept that at the forefront of their minds. We're in Florida, but water is very costly in this state, in our situation. They showed the map of the wells, where the wells are in our 67 wells. And we'll be coming up to 73, right, once we get some more online?
Yes, sir.
So, water is a premium in our state, believe it or not. And it's always going to be an issue. It has been since I've been here and I've been here 19 years. So, we have to do what's right. What else? We talked about that. And people are going to come up and they're going to talk about a forensic audit to see where all the money's gone and all that. Well, I don't think there's anything like that that we will find. But I did speak to the AG's office yesterday and I got a little bit of clarification. And I'm also going to be reaching out to Senator Collins. He is the chairman of the Joint Legislative Auditor, Auditing Committee to see what we can do about having the state come down and do an audit of our city. And something I found out today that was very promising was Representative Greco is on that committee. And he is our representative at the state level. So, we can work through the auditing committee to put the rest, the auditing request of our citizens if we can get something going through the joint committee at the legislative level. So, that's just some things I wanted to cover before we opened up the public comment. Any follow-up from any of the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. One, I appreciate the efforts made in terms of the audit. I think in the past, the cost prohibitive nature of a forensic audit is what's prevented that from happening. You know, potentially, it's costing you more than what you'll find, right? And so, that's really appreciated. The other thing I'd like to point out, just going back to the rates, is that, it was mentioned in the last presentation, I don't think it was touched on here, was that these rate increases are, in, I think, past the first year, are in lieu of the CPI increase, right? So, the CPI increase has averaged about 4.1% every year, which means that's built into your bill increase every year. So, inflation, what costs go up, right? So, when we talk about the 8% increases, we're talking about in lieu of a 4.1% increase, if it keeps to that running 10-year average. So, the overall increase is not necessarily 8%. It's 3.9% over what that 4.1 would normally be every year. So, just something to keep in mind that it's not a full 8%. If we were going to do the CPI, that would be happening on average at about 4.1%. I did some quick numbers in an Excel spreadsheet. And so, the difference there, when you take your current bill and just adjust it for CPI, the difference there on that, the moderate user, which is the, I believe it was 4,000 gallons, is about $17 a month by the final year of those increases. So, it's not quite the increase that it appears to be because we would normally have a 4.1% increase every year.
And the CPI wouldn't come back into effect until 2029?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Anything else? Thanks for that clarification, Councilman Miller. Yes, Polly, what you got?
Hi, Paul Pontono, Palm Coast. First of all, well, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I want to thank you for trying to think outside the box, Mr. Mayor, because that is what I was trying to think about, what could be done differently. In about 25 minutes, the President of the United States is going to be rattling some cages in Washington DC, as he has been, because he's taking a look at expenses and spending that shouldn't be going on. I'm not saying that's happening, but it does need to be looked at. The city's been around for 25 years now. Okay, and you folks, I want to thank you for your detail that you had given us today. But it's an expectation that the residents are going to be paying this rate increase. It's wrong, okay? This community here is mostly senior citizens. We are on fixed incomes, single incomes coming into a house of social security. And it's very, very difficult. And so, I respectfully disagree with you, Ms. Pontieri. I think it would be a big help monthly for folks to get those charges moved someplace else. And I just want to ask you to think out of the box where there could be cuts somewhere. And I welcome an audit. And I encourage everybody to encourage an audit for this city because it needs to be done. We have the right to know where our tax dollars are going and how our money is being spent. So, that's all I have to say and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, Ms. Gibson.
Anna Gibson, P section. So, I previously presented on the connection fees a few weeks back and this is go-backs to your first workshop that you ever held. You're saying the connection fees are going to be accounted for, but I just did the math and with, I looked at it online. Do you have the code of ordinances in front of you? It's Exhibit B. We're actually still losing $2,600 per home for a new house that would be installed with a Pep and tank. And I can explain that to you. So, the first thing is there's no increase to the Pep install proposed. So, we're currently losing $841 on that. There is a new Pep connection fee for $740, but that would mean we're still losing $100 on that. Then you have the meter installation fee. You previously presented that it was $1,400 in cost. It's, you're proposing $927. That's still a loss of $500. The next one is the water tap-in fee. You presented $2,800 was the cost. You're proposing $1,600. That's $1,200 that we're currently losing. So, I don't understand what you're doing. You're still saying that it's supposed to be at cost, but we're still losing. So, if we build 500 homes, that's $1.3 million this year that we're going to lose on that because you're not updating it or correcting it. Since I have some time, I might as well make a comment about moving the fees to our taxes. If I have a mortgage in an escrow account, all that's going to do is raise my monthly mortgage. So, I'm kind of with Teresa. I don't really see how that's going to help. It's just going to create confusion because now I'm just going to blame my mortgage company and I'm not going to blame Palm Coast for the base fees that you're charging. So, that's basically what I see. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Carl, can you...
I can, yes.
Yes.
I can respond to some of those comments. The Pep tank costs, those are covered by the capacity fees. So, those are fully recovered. And those other costs, the initial numbers were preliminary numbers as we went through and worked with our finance team to vet those numbers. Those final numbers are the true, actual costs. So, there is no cost to the city for any of those connection fees.
Ms. Gibson, you can speak to Carl offline. Let's move through the public comment. Yes, sir.
Hi, Louis Carl. So, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and fellow residents. So firstly, I'd just like to thank these gentlemen very much for your detailed presentation. It was really great. I'd like to be able to find the presentation somewhere in the future so I could go through it, but I couldn't find it on the website. So, if that could just be posted somewhere, that would be great.
It's posted?
I'm sorry.
The presentation that we were just giving is posted?
Yes.
It's posted on the website. Ms. Brittany, back in the back, she'll give you a link to it, okay?
Oh, okay, very good. So, the first thing I'd like to talk about is just the water conservation that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. My wife and I live in a very modest house, 1,600 square feet. We live very frugally. And it is just about impossible for us to go under 3,000 gallons of in-the-house water a month. In the summer months, when I'm watering the lawn just enough to keep it from browning over completely, 6,000 gallons, easy. So, my current bill the last few months has been, you know, or during the summer months at least, has been hitting $200. And that's including the stormwater, of course, and the solid waste. So, as far as increases are concerned, the CPI increase is not 4%. It's been 3% at least the last two years, what I did the analysis for that. I've got it right here. Except for stormwater, which increased by 16% last October and by 27% the October before. So, those are huge increases that were there just in the last couple of years. Okay, so we can move on to the next stuff. Oh, where did I leave all of this? Whoops. So, the, yeah, I agree about the ad-valorum and valorum taxes. I don't think it's going to help us at all if you're moving this into higher property taxes. I just don't see that that's really going to help. I know that they can be deducted from taxes, but most of us are retirees and we just go with standard deductions. We don't have enough expenditures in other fields to be able to deduct those off our taxes. I don't see the point. And then I've asked about that. Oh, yes, so I was glad to see that you do talk about the taxes on the, or at least the tax that's being paid, the impact fees to developers. So, it seems like, I had a very simplistic view of this and I was going to say, that's the obvious place to go after, you know, to go after the additional funds. But it looks to me like it might be a good idea if we could possibly lobby the state and try and get these increases back up again. So, I see I'm running out of time. And the only other thing that I could think of talking about was also that the new developments obviously are going to bring in a lot more taxes and that equals more revenue. But I realize that we have to have the money upfront, but perhaps we could then lower the fees later on again once we've done the...
Stable, stabilized, yes, sir, thank you.
So, thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Just on the top, I would rather leave the fees as they are as a monthly fee rather than change them to add to our escrow. My question is, is whenever another city, town, municipality, county wants to come in and you see all this, Flagler Beach is building out on John Anderson. Are we, contractually, it was in the city council meeting brought up that the Hammock Business was saying, oh, we'll only have to put up with our septic tanks for another four years before the city hooks up to our system and they're going to have sewers out there. They're possibly going to develop in Bonnell between Route 11 and 100, a couple thousand houses. So, when if anybody else comes to us and says, oh gee, we're going to build all these houses, we're going to do this, can we hook up to your system? And I know we charge a larger fee for out-of-town system, out-of-city system. But do we have to say, yes, okay, we'll hook up to you? All this is here is for Palm Coast residents. This is talking what it's going to cost for us. Now, you increase another city, town, or whatever, another development coming in, we're charging them more, but that's only going to increase the... What it's going to take for our system to work. And can we just say no? Or are we contractually obligated? Somebody says, oh, we want, without having them brought into the city and et cetera, are we obligated to say, okay, we'll hook up to you, but you're going to have to pay this much? Can we just say no sometimes? You know, this is all hooked up for what our city is possibly going to be built out at and to add other towns, other problems. Plantation Bay is always brought up. They had so much trouble there, the county had to bail them out. And maybe is the county going to say, gee, we can't do anymore? Maybe you could hook up to Palm Coast for a fee. And can we just say no? Thank you.
I have no problem with saying no, sir. We're going to do it a lot.
And I can expand on that slightly. You know, we do have utility service areas for water and wastewater. And some of that area is outside the city. So, we are obligated for some areas, but those major developments he's speaking to are outside our service boundary area. They're served by other entities and we do not have to serve them.
Right, and the Flagler County project, the A1A septic to sewer, was the county using ARPA funding and that contract came before the previous city council for approval?
Yes. Flagler Beach has, Flagler Beach has a lot of issues. Discharge issues, they're under consent, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
They're under consent. And Bonnell is going to have a really hard time and 8,000 new houses out there on the west side.
They just built a new plant too, right?
They're going to have issues. Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff Adams. I'm very recently Tiaria. Like, I closed in December and have just moved here and was interested in seeing how this huge rate increase was, came about. Thanks to these two gentlemen, I got a good idea. But having spent 40 years in construction and a lot of that in development, I think there are places you're missing that you could go after money. The first one that really bothered me a lot was you only had 3% in grants. Now, I worked with Mayor Lowell on St. Pete Beach. I worked with Carl Nurse in St. Pete. And we paid a person to look for grants, a grant writer. Now, they're paid from whatever grants they get. So, they have a vested interest in doing a good job. I think that's one huge area you've missed, no offense intended. But 3% is way low. The other thing that I would kind of advocate, you have a lot of lift stations. You have 142, if I remember the number right. Why aren't those being put in by the developers? You got D.R. Horton putting in 2,000 homes. They can put their own lift station in and you can require them to put force main in. I've had to do this. This is not somebody dreaming. This is stuff you can require as they're developing these projects. And relieving the pressure on, A, the old system and B, it's not our money, it's theirs. And they're going to absorb it so the houses cost three grand more. I really don't care. It's only so, you know, it's nickels and dimes per month. And your buddies at D.R. Horton and Ryland and KB Homes, I've worked with all these people. And they're not even going to bat an eye. So, I really would recommend you revisit that aspect of it because that's money you're leaving on the table, the grant money you're leaving on the table. And just as the comments were going through, there was a gentleman mentioned how much you were spending on cleaning trenches. I'm telling you, you've got some of the poorest grading I've ever seen coming out of new homes in the trenches and the covert pipes and stuff. I can walk down the street where I live and there's five or six that'll never flow. So, somebody's got to open their eyes and at least pay attention. So, those are my recommendations. And I hope you, especially the grant money, that's just ludicrous that it's only 3%.
Thank you, sir. The legislature is, they are discussing establishing more grants to help with infrastructure. But please get with Ms. Kershaw back there and have her give you my contact info. And you give her yours so I can get in touch with you, please.
And who was that, please?
Ms. Brittany Kershaw, right there at the block.
All right, thank you, sir.
Same, sir.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Just for the record, the development community does put in those lift stations. Where we put them in is in current ITT-platted Palm Coast lots.
So, pre-Palm Coast as a city?
Correct.
Please revisit the force mains.
That as well.
Yeah, they do that as well. Sometimes if they only need a six inch line for their development and we need a twelve inch to help serve the ITT lots, we'll pay the upsizing cost, but they do have to do line extensions and lift stations for their developments as part of the requirement.
I've put in as far as a mile, so.
Yeah, they've put in some long ones. Yes, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank you for thinking outside the box.
Yes, sir.
I was beginning to wonder if Palm Coast was turning into the Titanic. My name is Don Clough. I've been here since ninety-eight before the city was here. I chose the Woodlands because the town center was up there by the Woodlands and then you guys decided, well, let's move it down here. So the point about the Titanic is the Titanic was a failure because there weren't enough lifeboats for everybody on board. And what has been happening in Palm Coast is more and more of our fees and our taxes have been shifted into what's called utility bills instead of ad valorem taxes. Now the ad valorem taxes have been going down over the years while the fees and on the utility bills have been going up year after year. In fact, in your report, the reason why the rates weren't increased last year is because between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-four, our utility rates went up twenty point six percent. Between twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen, they went up seventeen point eight percent. Over the same period of time, the ad valorem taxes have been going down and down and down. Sounds to me like the ones that are benefiting the most are the ones that don't live in the Woodlands, but the ones that live elsewhere that have higher property tax rates. I also think another group that might be benefiting, now you can correct me because I don't know, I wanted to ask the question. Do these people in all these fancy apartment buildings have water meters on each apartment?
Yes.
Or is there one meter for the whole unit?
No, they work it out. I've lived in an apartment before and it's, you pay, you pay your fair share.
Each apartment, well, it's not built into the rent?
I don't know exactly how it is here.
Because before I moved here, I lived up in New York State and up there, everything's included in the apartment rent. You get your water, your electric, your, you know, everything's thrown in and the landlord that collects your rent is paying all those fees. You're not paying it. So you leave the shower running all day. You don't care. You're worried about, you know, infrastructure that's not able to serve what's going on. Well, maybe we need to look outside the box there as to where is this water going? Are those people running up the meters? Like they run up their heat bills up north, leaving the windows open when it's forty below because they're not paying the heat bill? Am I out of time or can I continue?
Yes, you're out of time, but thank you for your input. I appreciate it.
One last point. I'm also a disabled veteran. I paid my fees. I paid my fees so all of you could be healthy and wealthy and live the life that you want to live in Palm Coast. I paid my fees with my body. I don't need any more fees coming in the mail every month. I've had enough of them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your service as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Anna Maria Long, Flagler, executive officer of the Flagler Home Builders Association. I'm also resident of Indian Trails for thirty-five years as of yesterday. So one month ago, the HBA was brought in for a stakeholders meeting regarding the utility rate increase. At that time, we stated that we would support the cost recovery increase, given the high rate increase because it hadn't been done in fifteen years. Obviously, it's high. We asked that we'd be given the supporting documentation for all of that and that included line by line. My job is obviously to check things out, make sure everything's good to go so that I could say, great, perfect, wonderful. I know Vice Mayor, Mr. Miller, and I'm not sure if you guys had seen the emails that I sent out earlier today. I appreciate if you got the chance to read it. I will not bore you with all the details of it, but essentially on the HBA side, we immediately formed a task force so that we could have them full month to address it. But in that last month, and this kind of goes to Ms. Gibson's point of the confusion, we've received three different sets of numbers and didn't get the final numbers until Friday. So in that most recent version, for at least the PEP, the methodology was changed. So that said, as an organization, we cannot in good faith give our support today. However, we don't believe that it is in the city's best interest to hold this off. So instead, we have a meeting scheduled with the utility staff for Friday and we anticipate that we will have the full explanation. I think that now that it is at your attention and everyone is fully aware of the seriousness of us needing the full explanation, just like the citizens have been given a full explanation by the rate consultant. It's also important to note that this information was not provided by the rate consultant. I don't think there's any reason to doubt the rate consultant's information versus what we were given. The other takeaway, in my opinion, is that this is a reflection on exactly why we really need to get a city manager hired, a utility director, a community development director, and get the staff to support they need. I'm also a citizen here and I'm also going to feel the increase to my bill. I'm a high water, I'm going to speak really fast. Now, I'm a high water user. I have six people in my house, three of which are little and dirty. And it's going to be hard but necessary. And I'm honestly relieved to be in front of a council who ran on improving infrastructure. And I know that this really stinks, that you guys got stuck with kicking the can down the road, everyone else who kicked the can down the road, but I appreciate and trust you all to make the tough call and will support you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Jim Blackin, C-section, Palm Coast. Going over the numbers here, the question is are we overbuilding? Is the extra draw that's being put on the systems collapsing it? Or should we have moratorium, which was presented by Teresa three months ago? Maybe we need to slow down on the building. Maybe we need to actually ask these developers that are building eight thousand homes, hey, you're stressing out our system, you're putting a substantial increase, not just on their lots that are being cookie cutter sized, make them bigger, won't have the big of the demand, but put the emphasis on them to pay for it. They're just going to pass it on to the homeowner. They're going to get a brand new home. So I did the math, eight thousand homes, if they were to do a thirty thousand or thirty thousand per home, connection fee, new home fee, that's two hundred and forty million dollars. That's one, that's almost the big bond that we're putting. We eliminate one full bond by putting the actual infrastructure, not just underground in front of their houses. That's the developer's responsibility anyway, but they're putting that big of a draw and demand on our system for the whole city, they need to pony up to do the R and R or the upgrades for it. Not everyone out here that's on a fixed income. If you increase that rate, the people here that are on a fixed income are going to have a choice. Do I pay the bill or not pay the bill? Do I water the front yards or not? I've got to cut my water. The front yards are going to look like crap. Excuse my French, but it's also going to make the value of the homes go down and it's going to crash the market here. It's not your guys' fault. I understand that. Congratulations, by the way, on being elected. But we're at a crossroad right now that we need to stand firm against the developers that are overdeveloping this city right now and we don't have the means to make them pay their impact fees. So if you put a moratorium on them where you only let them put in sections of their development for a year, two years, then you can increase the impact fees. Then you have the leverage and anyone trying to put a new one through the planning department puts a requirement on it. You have a requirement to put a nine million dollar bond per three hundred homes for our infrastructure. That's how we get our money. That's how we think out of the box. Hit the developers back and I'm one. So I'm up here basically talking against developers and builders. I am one, but that's how we save our city. Thank you. Sir. Yes, sir.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I've been to every one of these presentations, from the community center to the one we had last two weeks ago to this one. I don't know what's going on. I can't get the data. The numbers are amazing, way over everybody's head. We're talking about things, half these people you've been looking at all day, they don't understand what is going on. They have one simple question. How much is this going to cost me monthly to get my water and my sewer? I've yet to understand in this presentation, my bill has two line items, wastewater from the plant and freshwater. I have yet to see that broken down to show how much it is. You guys presented something online that talked about an eight percent increase of your water bill. Is that just water or is that also wastewater? Because a month ago, it was posted online that we're looking at a thirty-six percent increase. So the information that's coming out to the public is a mess. It's confusing. We are, don't underst, like I said, there's one question we want to know. How much are you going to cost us? When I have five projects around my house that I want to get done, I can't get them all done like the vice mayor is pleading with everybody. Let's look at these nine, ten projects and figure out the top three we want. But I want to congratulate all of you. You have finally found a way to slow up development, slow things down at Palm Coast because I guarantee you, the first thing these realtors are going to run into, well, how much, I hear the water is really crazy in Palm Coast and you've got a thirty, forty year bond, which we're all going to be paying for, for a long period of time, and we don't have a voice. It's going to be decided by you guys up there. You're going to sit and make that decision for us and you're going to move forward and we're all going to get the bill, just like what happened with our trash pickup with the previous mayor in which we had no idea what was happening with that. So please just be transparent, be honest, be clear. Why don't we have a town hall? Let's do a town hall next week. Come on. Let's all get in a big room and we can talk about what we want to do. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tony Amaral, Amaral, Palm Coast. You are in a bad spot. That's the honest truth. I mean, it's been twenty-five years as a city. It's been kicked down the road and it's coming to fruition. You've heard the numbers, the FDIP is telling you, you have to do something. So even if you stopped construction completely one hundred percent today, you still are paying for that to be get done. I did see multiple projects were fully funded through the impact fees. So growth was paying for itself, but again, if it's not there, you can't charge for it. If you can't charge for it, you can't build, which means you're not going to collect the money to then build it later on. No one likes it. Do the costs get passed on? Yes. And every, you know, I've been here for forty-one years and I hear it, I was here, you know, I hear the comment, I've been here since two thousand sixteen, I've been here since two thousand eight. I mean, it's been happening since nineteen, December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-nine, this problem has been started. It has to get solved. We might not like it, but at the end it has to because we won't have the water, even existing homes today, nothing will change. We will be under mandate from the FDIP like we are still with nothing. And I was shocked that, you know, your major wastewater management plant one hasn't had a major refurbishment since two thousand six. It's not you, but it's been councils before you who have said, no, no, no. But we're at the point now where no is not an answer. No is just essentially a death sentence to the city because you won't have water, you won't have people, you won't have taxes, it will wither up and dry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Margaret Fisher, One River Landing Way, Palm Coast. I would like to start by commending you for the stance that you are taking to be upfront and say, there's been mismanagement for very long. There's been people sitting in your seats who are afraid to say, we have to have an increase. The data that we got was overwhelming and when I say overwhelming, I don't necessarily mean in a positive way. It was too much, TMI, too much information, okay? I'm sorry about that, but I have to be honest. I'm an ex-teacher, so you guys are going to get it straight. I think in my mind, the most important thing is to not do two increases this year. I know that you've gotten recommendations to do it that way, but that is not the right way for the people of Palm Coast. You can see from the people who are speaking that it's just overwhelming. I mean, eight percent as of the first of April and then a hundred percent increase of eight percent becomes sixteen percent. You'll never get reelected if you finish your terms. I mean, it's just totally overwhelming. And, you know, to listen to Mr. Carl Cody say that we're going to quickly expedite this project, it's a huge project. Why do we have to quickly expedite it? It can't be pushed back one more year so that instead of doing it over four years, you're going to do it over five years and then you get to do just eight percent each year. There needs to be a different way of solving the problem. Yes, you're looking at the whole thing, but it didn't get to the whole thing over, in a short period of time. It was years and years. And so if we have to develop a five-year plan or a six-year plan to get it straightened out, we're still going to get it straightened out and it's going to get better each year. And I think that's what the people of Palm Coast have to understand. Nobody's happy about the number eight. I'm not happy about it either, okay? But to go from eight percent this year to sixteen percent this year and another eight percent next spring, it's just not fair to the people. And so I really encourage you to take one more year or even two more years despite what you've heard from these two gentlemen who are very good at what they do, but not necessarily good at transferring the information to everybody. I have to be honest. Again, teacher's speaking to you. So I thank you for giving me the time and just think, stretch it out a little bit. It'll still get done.
Thank you, ma'am. Part of our, part of our problem, Ms. Fisher, is we are under a consent order by FDIP that has to be reached by twenty twenty-six, correct, city manager?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight. So we're a bit, we're under a bit of pressure. Thank you, ma'am.
But Mr. Mayor, they want to see progress towards what needs to be done. The fact that you don't get a ton by the date they stated, but you made three or four years of progress, they're not going to shut us back, trust me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Shandaleh Praninger. Okay, quickly, I want to address the city manager about that. If I brought it is because I exhausted all the tips on the internet, how to contact them, all their phone numbers, and I went to a few addresses and they did not exist. So it's a phantom place. That's why I said maybe some people here have some ideas.
If you'll speak with Ms. Kershaw in the back, maybe she has a different point of contact.
I'll try that. All right, coming to the water issue. I mean, that's, that's a big, that's, that's a beast. And I'm confident that you'll come up with something that works. You have it in your heart to serve the people, so I believe it's going to be done. Maybe this year, maybe not. I don't know. But the previous administration put a priority on the splash pad, on the recreation center. I heard about golf and all those things and we knew there was a problem with the water. So I applaud you to address that and I hope that all those other projects that people would like would be put on the hold for a while until water is really addressed. Now, the PEP tanks, this is the most frustrating thing for the residents. The concept was interesting for a small city, but for a big city, it doesn't work very well. And today I heard that they age and we have to replace them, so there's no end to that. I thought that was interesting, the idea of the audit and if you can get that, that would also. And if you can get that, that would also give the trust of the people back. The grant money to explore that, I thought that was brilliant. What is troubling me in that thing of the water is that the people are going to have to pay for it eventually, one way or the other. But we're not paying for us. We're paying for the development that are being approved, that are being built. And a lot of them. So my friend was doing a research. We have in the city, a little bit over one hundred thousand people. And the goal is to go to two hundred fifty thousand people. So how are we going to handle that? We have a plant one, then a plant B for the water treatment. Then we talk about expansion. So by the time all that will be done, will it be enough? Or are we going to be back at a time where we have to think about a new solution? What do other cities do, those who don't have the pep tanks?
Ma'am, your time's expired. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Ed Fuller, Honorable Mayor Norris, Honorable Vice Mayor Teresa Carli-Pontieri, Honorable Councilman Ty Miller, Honorable Charles Cambaro. I want to thank this council for taking on this issue. It is a difficult issue. It's one that you did not choose to do. But you did when you, when you ran for office. It has to be fixed. I commend you. This is not, it's a challenge. There's no question about it. No one wants a rate increase. But the question is, what happens if we don't do the increase? This system is going to fail. We're going to get charged fines by the DFEP for that consent order. You have no choice. And if we don't do the improvements that Carl has laid out, we're going to have more consent decree orders because of the homes that are coming online. You have to look for the future. Is there pain? Absolutely. Do you want to do this? You really want to increase it? No. Do you have to? Yes. It's the right decision. You really don't have any choice. And I understand that. And I commend you for doing that. That's leadership. It's not to assign blame for the past, but to chart our course for the future. And that's what you're doing. And that's commendable. And a lot of people, they're not going to be happy about it. You're not going to be happy about it. But the thing is, the viability of the water system, the most important resource we have in this city. We want to save money? Don't fix that water plant. And when Chief Barry Hill goes over to the fire department, they don't have enough pressure to put out a fire. Might as well just do it with the fire department. We'll save money. Well, I mean, it's, you don't have a choice. Water is the premier asset that we have in this, in this community. It's a health issue. It's a safety issue. And people rely on that. It's a deliverable that the city has, has to make. No, every effort it could possibly do to make sure the quality, the resilience, the sustainability. I commend you all for doing this. It's not easy. But I know you signed up to fix it and I know you will. And I want to thank you all for doing this tonight. Other people may have passed. You will not. Leaders don't pass. They stand up. They don't kneel down to pressure. They stand up. They stand up for the communities. They stand up for a future. And they stand up for our citizens. I want to thank you so much for doing this and may God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Yes, sir. Mr. Stone.
Good evening. I know the five of you that sit in this council are good people. What you have to think about, all the elderly people, they won't be able to afford any more increases. This is crazy. Hold the previous council people responsible for this mess. That's what you have to think about before you make this decision. Because this has been going on since this city became a city. Corruption up and down the ladder. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Teresa G. Impalo from the P section here. Everything everybody said, you listened quietly to everyone. But you have to realize, when you look at life, water is essential. So we know we have to do that. Whatever way you plan to do it, I'm sure you'll do well. But try to consider the other things you're budgeting within where we're at now. Some things don't need to be done right now. This is, water is really important. It's, it's our life. You have to have water. So do what you have to do with the, for the water filtration. But take a serious look at other budget allocations you've made for things that are not as important as this. That's all I ask. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dice. Further comment from the council?
Mr. Mayor. Just to, to my, my colleagues on the council and, and my fellow citizens, you know, of the city of Palm Coast. We can no longer admire this problem. You know, and, and as, as an army general, you know, we have to attack it and fix it. And so, but I will pledge to you that I will continue to fight and as hard as I can with all the connections that I have to, to get federal funding from our federal government. I think we have a good start with Senator Scott. I know Ashley Moody from, from when I was younger. So I'm going to, I'm going to DC this month and I'm going to try to meet with her as well. We will, we will, I will do everything I can to find a way to help offset some of these bonds that we talked about. If we get the funds, we can, we can figure out how to offset some of these things. But as a leader, I understand all the implications involved. But we can't, we can't afford to continue to admire this problem. And it's, it's something that we've all been saddled with. But I think I'm prepared to move forward and get this done so we can get started to protect our water and our wastewater system. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Cambaro. Councilman Miller, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to kind of echo Councilman Cambaro's thoughts. Say, you know, it's been said before, nobody had run for office to raise your water rates. I didn't run for office to, you know, make your pocketbook a little bit slimmer. I'm here to try to fix things. And throughout knocking on thousands of doors, infrastructure is the main thing residents, we're, we're talking about in terms of need and relief from. During this last rate cycle last year, since that time, we've been hit with a consent decree. So the state is mandating that we fix certain aspects. We know based on our internal experts that if we don't fix other aspects of our system, we'll likely be hit with other consent decrees because we need to upgrade those facilities as well. So it's, it's not a fun thing. Nobody, nobody's here advocating for this because we're just, you know, trying to take money out of someone's pocket. We're trying to do the right thing, or I'm trying to do the right thing in terms of fixing this one time the right way instead of what's been happening in the past where it's been voted in a way that, as was mentioned, we, we all won't be elected, right? If, if we vote this through. What's been done in the past is that, in consideration of that, people have not funded the things that needed to happen the right way because they wanted to get reelected. So instead of that, my concern isn't to get reelected. My concern is to try to fix this in the right way, what I think best. There's been advocacy for extending the rates, you know, the financial planners and the bond instruments that have to be done. This is the best way to do it, the, the current, you know, recommendation for the rates. I also mentioned that over the, and I think someone refuted that with the CPI, but the CPI we're talking about is specific to this type of activity. So it may not match with what you Googled. But over the last ten years, the CPI has been four point one percent. So when we talk about these eight percents, it's in lieu of the four point one percent. So it's not, it's not just an eight percent increase because you would have received a four point one percent increase automatically next year because of inflation. If that were to hold, that same rate were to hold. We can only assume those things based on the past, right? So what I'm, what I'm looking at is that, yes, it's going to be an increase and it's going to hurt a little bit. It's our water system. It's, it's not the city's water system. It's yours as well. And, and so when things are broken at your home, sometimes it hurts because you have an unexpected bill. And you have to kind of figure out how to pay for that. But you have to get it done. Otherwise, you live in a broken home, right? So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, is that I'm here to try to fix this the right way one time so that for the foreseeable future, we're not coming back every two years and saying, okay, now we need seven percent this year or we need nine percent the next year. I want to fix this one time. I know it costs money and I know it hurts. But I pay, pay almost a three hundred dollar bill every month. So I would fall into that high water user category, I guess. So I'll also pay this, this same increase as well. And so it's, it's not with a happy heart that I'm, I'm advocating for this. It's because I, I believe it has to be done. And I think that getting it done now versus trying to push it later, especially the ones, the, the projects that are not under consent decree will result in further costs due to costs of construction growing greater than in typical inflation for your CPI. So if we do it later, then potentially this is now, instead of a seven hundred million dollar project, this is a one billion dollar project. And what do those rates look like in the future because of that? We all know that costs of construction are not going to go down. So if they exceed CPI by any means, then we're costing you more money in the long run by not doing it now.
Thank you, council. Councilman, Vice Mayor, any closing comments before we get to this?
Yes, and I'll, I'll try to be quick here. So just a couple of housekeeping things. I also would like the same information that is going to be provided to HBA because I do think we should be cost recovery on those charges. And I was caught off guard by the communications I saw because I agree there was a lack of clarity. So if I can just be kept in the loop on that stuff, I'd appreciate it. So I think I'm coming at this from a little bit of a different angle because I've been in this seat the last few years and I've seen what I would define as death by a thousand cuts. We've been really great about property taxes. Last year, we rolled back a little bit. The year before that, I believe we held or rerolled back a little bit as well. Rollback? Yeah, full rollback. That's right. So, you know, we, we, we have really tried to keep costs down. But I also came in on the heels, I wasn't part of it, but came in on the heels of the waste contract, which caused fees to go up as well as stormwater fees. Those have gone up. And now we're looking at utility fees. Now, I understand we have infrastructure needs. And I agree that many of these should be addressed. I've said it from this seat before. And I'll reiterate, I do not think that the full four hundred and fifteen million dollars needs to be funded through this rate utility increase. I do not find that to be necessary. So I think that we could provide a little bit of relief. And I'm quite candidly disappointed that there wasn't an alternative, that this is an all or nothing approach. But that's not my job. My job is to vote with what's in front of me. I will tell you, I think my, my gravest concern with this, and I went back and I looked at the two thousand eighteen rate study. Carl, you've been great. I've asked you for data ad nauseam and you've been fantastic providing it to me. I think what this boils down to is, you know, in two thousand eighteen, when the study was done, I asked the question, was wastewater treatment plant one considered? Because it doesn't seem like it was. And that is, that seems to be the bulk of our costs now. That's what we're looking at, the issues that we're having. When we look at two thousand eighteen, that rate study called for a one hundred and thirty million dollar CIP. We're now asking for a four hundred and fifteen million dollar CIP. That is a three hundred percent increase. If every single one of our funds or departments operated that way, we would be bankrupt in a six-year period. Our CIP went up three hundred percent. That is a lack of planning. It's a lack of management. It's a failure of the consultants. I know it wasn't you, sir. There's, there's something that went wrong here. And now we rely on the taxpayer to fix it. And that's my issue. It's one thing to say, costs have gone up or, you know, we missed something, something unexpected happened. We didn't have sufficient rainy day funds. That is not what happened here. I wasn't here in two thousand eighteen. I know many of the, the staff members were not here in two thousand eighteen and were not a part of what happened back then. But I can't unsee what I believe to be some grave missteps in the past and then ask the taxpayers to shoulder that full burden at this time. Additionally, I'm very disturbed that we were not collecting on those miscellaneous charges for so long. It seems to me that it's pretty standard to collect those. And I, I believe it was either last year or the year before, just alone and not collecting those fees, we missed out on two point eight million dollars. So again, who makes up that difference? The taxpayers. I agree with everybody up here. We need to pay for these things. There are, there are needs. But I also think that this is not, if we do not approve this rate increase as is, I do not think there is not a way to get this done. I don't believe that. I think there is a way to get it done or we can take some of these projects and prolong them, phase them out in a, in a longer approach. I do think that there are alternatives. So while I would support a large part of what has been presented here today as presented, I cannot.
So the measure we are taking up today, this is two bonds. This is two bonds. We're going to do the first one now, like by October, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And then the second one would come up when?
October of two thousand twenty-eight. And again, to be determined.
That will come before us again, Vice Mayor. But this is the first, this is the first part of that. But it's, the rate, the rate, the rate is as if both bonds were enacted. And that's to keep us on a glide path to being able to pay for those bonds over time, correct, Murray?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, and one other thing. I'm sorry, just as a housekeeping matter, city manager too. Somebody mentioned a grant writer. Have we hired, because we did budget for a grant writer. Have we hired a grant writer yet?
No, we are on our second round of interviews. We had a really good candidate, but she declined to follow through the interview process. But we have a consultant on board that is helping us with a grant strategy in the meantime so that we can continue to move the needle on grants. But we haven't found a specific person yet, but we are trying to actively move the needle on grants.
Okay, so you did a shout out for more city managers to apply and we got a ton. Maybe we should do a shout out for grant writers to, to apply. But thank you for that update.
Do you mind? I just wanted to ask about how that compensation package, you know, they mentioned a commission-based compensation, which seems to align with.
That's correct. That's, most, most grant writers are paid out of the grant.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure we're aligned with that as well, so.
Okay, with that being said, that closes our comments. Can I get a, someone to make a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I knew that we approved this ordinance with, I guess, option three as presented this evening.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion, any further discussion? Ms. Cook, call the vote. Restate, restate the motion, please.
Yes, sir. Ordinance of two thousand twenty-five utility rate amendment.
And the motion was to approve at the, as outlined in Plan Three?
Scenario Three.
Scenario Three. Okay. Ms. Cook, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
No.
Councilmember Cambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes three to one.
Thank you so much. We're moving on the res, item E resolutions, number seven.
Yes, Mayor, this is, do you want to read it in, Jeremiah? So I was just trying to move along. We're off a little bit from your agenda packet because of the addition of the seat three.
I apologize.
So this is the grant.
Is that Resolute in two thousand twenty-five approving a federally funded sub award and grant agreement with Florida Department of Emergency Management relating to Hurricane Milton expenses?
This is me. I was happy to answer any questions that you have on the agenda item. This is a standard procedure for us to get reimbursement expenditures from the Florida Department of Emergency Management. Our estimated, estimate expenditures are two point two million for Hurricane Milton. Happy to answer any questions city council may have. Happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Any questions from the council regarding this resolution?
I just have something that's adjacent to this, but just for clarity and to have it on the record. So one of the, I think one of the challenges that we faced during the hurricane was the prolonged nature of our debris pickup. A lot of residents were waiting many, many weeks for debris to be picked up, and so my understanding and talking to Matt in regards to that pickup was that our contract was too good, essentially by the rates. So we negotiated such a good rate in terms of our contract without kind of a contingency for not being put last, that the contractors that serviced that prioritized us last because they were getting more money from other municipalities in terms of that pickup. So I think I, we had a conversation about that. I want to make sure that in the future versions of this, that we have some contingency in there so that we are not penalized for having a more cost-friendly contract with, with some of these, these vendors to the tune of us waiting six weeks or seven weeks for pickup.
Absolutely. That is understood. We recognize the frustration from our residents, so we are going out for a competitive bid on different services for debris management of them going to pick it up and having language in there that adds that contingency because we want to make sure that FEMA re, that reimburse as much as we can on those expenditures.
Are we aware, thank you for bringing this up, because I remember this happening, and it completely slipped off my radar, so I appreciate it.
Same. I said we need to talk about this, and then when this came up, it clicked in my brain.
Yeah, I know. Good catch. I look at this and almost see an opportunity for abuse from contractors. Do we know, are there any legal mechanisms to cap what they can charge, or is there an ability to gouge these types of things?
We would have to look into that type of contingency language.
And my other question kind of related to that, are these contracts for all debris pickup or only in emergency situations?
Yeah, it's for only emergency situations.
Correct. Madam Vice Mayor, so there are rules that are in place with FEMA that they will only reimburse us prevailing rates that are considered, you know, market equitable. So they're competitively priced throughout the market. What happened with our contract was not so much that we negotiated really good rates, it was that it had been almost five years to the day when we wrote that contract, and a lot happened within those five years. And a lot of other people had newer contracts in place that had already made those market adjustments to their prices. What we did not have in place were performance bonds. We have put that into our solicitation for the recompete, as well as some other language that protects us, you know, in that case. We've also kind of ponied up with the county for their cooperative agreement for their debris cleanup as well. So we're gonna have multiple tools in the toolbox moving forward so that, you know, we have contingencies in place, and that doesn't happen to us again in the future.
So what you mean by the county is, that's a backstop, right? So if we have our contract and they're not servicing in a timely manner, then we can utilize the county's contract?
That's correct. And we also intend to do a multiple award on our own contract, too. So we'll have a couple of vendors, hopefully if we get, you know, some good competition in response to our solicitation, that will award those contracts to multiple vendors with their rates, and that'll be kind of our primary. But we're also in that cooperative agreement with the county, with their contractors, and they just went through that process. We had team members in that process as well to, to help choose some good vendors in there, so.
Thank you.
And Matt, don't go anywhere yet. What did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna highlight a good news story. Even though we had that issue, I mean, we, we were still getting calls weeks and weeks later, hey, I still have debris, I still have debris, and really, I think it was outside of the scope, but the DPWs still leaned forward and took care of our residents. I think I called Matt a few times saying, hey, I still, we got a, we got a few stragglers out here, we need a cleanup, and he said, no problem. His team executed, so.
Absolutely. Any, anytime we have a storm event, our crews are on standby to supplement whatever operations we have going on. We do have equipment in place that can handle that debris. We have employees with the expertise that know how to do it, and that's what we did this time, was we stepped in, we supplemented those crews, and we made sure that we could put forth a good effort for our citizens.
And my point was pulling assets from the, the other departments within the city. Do you do that?
Absolutely, especially stormwater. They, they really stepped up and gave us some, some crews to drive dump trucks and to use equipment to pick up debris, and they committed to us as long as they, as long as we needed them. We cut them loose, you know, as soon as we could to get back to their primary work, but we definitely appreciated that.
I just, I just want us to make sure that we're leaning forward for the next storm season, because I have been in that situation where we had, we had a, we had a major typhoon hit on a Friday, the following Friday, we had another one. And that's not, that's a short period of time to get all that loose debris that's gonna be objects, flying objects, you know, off the street and policed up. So we need to make sure we have a solid plan going into storm season. Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Mayor, I would just, I would just ask the city manager to, to share the, the N-hour sequence, right, when we get ready for deployment, really the 72-hour checklist of all the things that we do in preparation from the storms, and a lot of this is captured there, but I, it's a great, it's a great checklist as we prepare and standing up the EOC and everything else. I think it's worth taking a look at.
All right, thank you, Councilman. So with that being said, are we done with that? You got something else, Councilman Miller?
No, I was gonna make a motion.
Make a motion, then.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment? Anyone got a public comment on?
I just got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
If we're getting money back from FEMA because of the damage of debris, did we ever consider trying to ask FEMA to help out with the peptides that backed up and the general flooding and getting our infrastructure so it would be able to be handled? Was there ever a line item to try to get any of that money?
I was gonna let you finish all the way through, and then I can answer the question. So you, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, yes, and yes. So FEMA has a program called Hazard Mitigation, and the cities and local municipalities can apply for grant funding for projects. It's on a rating scale. We have submitted projects for wastewater treatment plant one, and we have submitted projects for the PEPs and PEP panel replacements because they're aging as well. So we actually have some money coming in on that infrastructure.
Okay, so the 2.9 only had to do with debris and damage?
2.2 is all of our expenditure. So Mr. Mansell was referencing some crews that were going out and supplementing, that's a part of this. Any damage to facilities, that's a part of this. Tank trucking and going in there and getting the poop out of the PEP tanks and putting it in the plant, that's a part of this as well. So all of that's comprehensive in the 2.2.
But we still do have a requisite to update our system?
Yes.
Whether they give it or not is, but at least somebody was on the ball to give that assistance.
And to add on that, the legislative priorities or the appropriation priorities, we've been told that the state is kind of keying on resiliency in terms of stormwater and these storm events. So there's a grant program that's gonna, that, that basically is revisiting things that we asked for last year in terms of these systems, as well as in our appropriations priorities, we've, we've asked for specific things that are related to these projects as well. As well, Mr. Guevara has kind of championed going through Rick Scott's office and trying to get money from the federal government as well. So we're searching for the money in every place we can, you know, we're turning over every stone, so we're hoping to get that money to offset some of these bonds so that at a future point, we can revisit these rates and potentially lower that 8% on the backend to something lower, so it's better for our residents.
There was a prepayment, if we could prepaid the bonds off, because in a couple of years, if you're able to actually implement those fees on the developers that they pass on to the homeowners at $30,000 pop, $240 million, we don't need the second one.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Totally forgotten about this. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mark Webb, Palm Coast. I want to applaud the creativity of the city taking advantage of that long period time after Milton to send their tree trimming crews out around my neighborhood and tree, and trim trees near all the power lines that weren't damaged by the storm, but they piled up all the debris with all the FEMA stuff, saving us a ton of money to get it hauled out. So that was really creative. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dice.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve this resolution.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been stated by Ms. Pontier, Ms. Cook, please call the, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Guevara?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We'll move on to item J, consent items. Any questions or concerns with the consent items presented by the city manager?
Mayor, I just wanted to call attention to eight, which is your auditor selection procedure. There was one of the comments made tonight about an audit. Your annual audit will be presented to you on your March 18 business meeting. So the city does conduct an audit every year, and that'll be presented at that time. This is a procedure to have in place for selecting the firm for the next competitive bid process, but just wanted to call the attention to that matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions on the consent? Move to approve the...
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We're good? My consensus, we're good? You're good?
Public comment?
We need a vote?
Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody have any public comment on the consent? Seeing no one come forward, I'll come back. Everyone good?
Need to vote on it?
Are we gonna vote? We have to vote? Call the vote, Ms. Cook, to approve the consent agenda items.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Guevara?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to our final, our final leg here, public comment. Anyone have any closing comments? You have 30 seconds, Ed. You don't get three minutes.
Thank you, Howard Ray Stevens. I just want you to know, my prayers and thoughts are with you. And Michelle Ramos from the permitting division, thank you for helping me get my permit. It's never too late to say thank you, and thank you for that wonderful staff over there. And everyone, thank you for your vote. Have a good evening. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Anyone else with closing comments? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dice for closing comments by council. Anyone have anything further? Any hot button?
I had the pleasure of going to the University of Florida this weekend and watching the Florida Gators softball team win their sixth straight run rule game in a row, so.
Go Gators.
Had a great time. Go Gators.
We'll, we'll have to see what happens in March Madness. That's what...
I don't think, I don't think there's a team that you, you like that...
Say there was, Councilman Miller.
I'd like to point out that the Florida Gators are likely a number one seed, but yes, we should have a council bracket.
Anyone else?
Hope it does. Vice Mayor? No, I just prayers out to Councilman Stevens and his family. I know, I know, there's been a lot of prayers sent their way, and I'm really appreciative of that, and just keep them coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I did miss something. I just wanted to say to your point very early in the meeting that I think Mr. Stevens' decision to resign shows the type of person he is. He expressed to me specifically that, you know, he felt guilty because he thought that he was not doing his job, you know, as per what he was elected to do. And I expressed, hey, just take care of yourself and get better, but that was on his thought process, and, you know, he was concerned about how he wasn't serving the citizens of Palm Coast, and I think that says a lot about who he is as a person.
A career public servant. And hey, Ray, if you're listening, all the, all the gentlemen and the knights at the Knights of Columbus are praying for you.
You got anything else, Councilman?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I've been in constant contact as often as I could with Kim, you know, hopefully if Ray's out of ICU, I'm hoping things will look better. He, he's a strong man, and I think it shows a strong character, you know, for him to resign to get someone else that can fulfill the duties. I really appreciate that. I would like to mention, I haven't done this from the dice yet, but I am doing a $2,500 scholarship for each of the high schools, and it's a STEM scholarship, and the application process is open right now. You can go topectm25.com and go through the application process, and it should close by the end of April, end of April, and we'll select two kids, one from each high school to receive a $2,500 scholarship. With that being said, council, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
City manager, I know you got something.
I was just gonna say thank you. I know you guys talked through some really hard things tonight, and just want to appreciate the council on the discussion and making the hard decisions, so thank you. No other comments, Mayor.
Okay, what's our next meeting?
Next week, March, oh, Friday, sorry. Friday, yes, we're gonna talk about the comp plan.[1783.71]